Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board meeting for October 8th, 2019. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the website. We'll come to order at 7:02. And the first item on the agenda, public hearing, Bobby and Roy, application for an accessory apartment special permit, 102 Perry Street. And I'll read the notes. In accordance with the Town of Douglas accessory apartment zoning by law and Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, the Douglas Planning Board will be holding a public hearing on the application of Bobby and Roy for an accessory apartment special permit. Copy location is 102 Perry Street, assesses map 244, parcel 5, Douglas, Mass. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, October 8th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the community meeting room, Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest Knox Jr., Chairman Douglas Planning Board. Public hearing is now open. Do we have somebody presenting?
Hi, I'm Bobby. I don't know how this works. I've never done this before.
Just give us a little description of who's going to be there.
You name an address and then you can just tell us what you're asking.
So I'm Bobby Roy, 102 Perry Street in Douglas. Moved here in December of 2019. House already had an accessory apartment in it. Reason for moving there was my elderly father was going to live with us. Unfortunately, he passed in February, so the apartment's been open. My sister decided to move in in the end of August, and that's when we realized, we got a notice that said we were not in compliance with the rules. We didn't realize we had to apply, so we quickly got on top of it and we had our application. So that's...
So it's already...
It's all pre-existing, or we already approved it as before?
Yeah. I think it's been 10 years it had been going on with the prior owners.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, it's just not transferable when they transfer owners.
Yeah, I didn't know.
There's a bunch of rules and regs. Yeah. Everybody...
Bill, any questions or comments on the application? Daxes are all paid, aren't they? Are they? Okay. All your butters were notified.
Unfinished room in the apartment.
All right. Board, any questions, comments?
Make a motion to grant the accessory apartment.
Close public hearing.
Oh, you want to ask the public?
I'm sorry?
You want to ask the public?
Yeah, well, anybody in the audience have any thing on training for this application?
Yeah, I do. I was at the first meeting.
I'd like to have your name and address, please.
Barbara Randall at 86 Linden, so I have that. That's yours. The first time it was done, we were told that there was a young man who had Lyme disease so serious that he couldn't work, and therefore they applied for this. Okay. Brian and Danny. Well, I live in a one-family neighborhood, not a multi-family house neighborhood, and I'd like to keep it that way. I think you set a precedent by having it transferred from one to the other, to the other. She leaves, maybe the next people who come in. How did you find out that she had other people living there? I was wondering how you could possibly police it.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
We routinely send out reminders to the residents that have permitted accessory apartments that they have to renew it every three years. So every three years, we should be able to have them in, make sure everything is status quo, the same as what it was originally. If not, that's when we may identify a problem. Or if they don't renew, then we transfer it over to the building department. They would issue a violation notice, and then they would pursue it after.
Also, Bill, I think Mark's also been tracking them sometimes when this property's transferred, and that's got the accessory apartment.
Okay. It's just that I do not want precedents set.
Yeah, it doesn't mean it...
It's an actual permit.
Yeah, it's not a multi...
It's a special permit that's been incorporated into our bylaws.
Which means it's not allowed by right.
And they can't rent it.
They can't rent it. They have to be related by blood, or it has to be a caregiver. Okay?
So she moves, it's the process starts all over again.
Every time.
If the people want to use the accessory apartment, if they do not want to use the accessory apartment, then there's a procedure that's required that they remove the kitchen area and stuff like that, so that it can't be rented out as an apartment.
I was wondering that.
Yeah, but it could also be...
You can't.
Low to moderate income.
Yeah.
So there's a third type of person that can go there. Blood-related, caregiver, low to moderate income housing.
So it can be rented?
Yes.
The low, it's not that straightforward. The low to moderate would have to be deed restricted as such and meet certain parameters to qualify.
But it is available.
It is available.
As a method, as a permissible method.
Yes. We don't have any in town that are...
Yeah, we don't. But they would, they would, financial records and all that would have to be incorporated into the permit, so that we know that it's a low income rental.
So we can become a rental?
No, we cannot.
Not...
That's what you're saying, it can become a rental if it's a low-income person.
It would still require a special permit.
It doesn't say that they have to be blood-related and low-income? Or do they just have to be low-income, like she said earlier?
They would still require a special permit every three years.
Okay.
But it's in, but it's simply, it's, I'm newer to the town. It's in the bylaws here.
It is.
In the town. Oh, yeah.
Right, so it would take town meeting to revert that bylaw and take it out. So it's, it's been adopted by the town as a bylaw.
Yes.
With a special permit. So it's, it's already in the bylaws. And every town, some towns are different. I mean, you know, there's a town that's by right, I'm trying to remember the town, it's Concord, or that they can have an apartment, a real apartment, every time in order to hold off those 55 B's, you know, the, not 40 B's and such like that. And other towns like Natick where I'm from, it's similar to this town where they don't do the low-income part of it, but they do the relative part of it. So this town is a little different. So every single house can have this. You could have this. You have the right, no, I know, but you have the right to have it. It comes before the board, so, yeah.
Bill, is this about your time?
No, it predates. So it's been here over 20 years.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? All right, seeing none. Yeah, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to point out that, and I'm not sure if this is the case in their instance, but over the years, we've modified our decision, but our current special permit has some conditions that may not have been in the original special permit. Particularly separate electrical meters, I think, and...
Are not allowed. Are not allowed, separate meters?
No, we want separate.
We want some for the accessory apartments?
Yes. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, we don't.
Single meter and what was the other one?
Right.
No, I apologize.
No worries, no worries.
They have water, water sewer.
It's supposed to be run like a single-family house. It looks like a single-family house. Act like a single-family house.
So there's one electric meter, so it's not like if they rent it out, there could be a separate tenant.
Right, yeah.
Believe me, if you see five people living there in six cars that are just for that, you know, call the building inspector. You know what I mean? You have rights, but, but under the bylaw, we all have these rights.
Under the state law, you have to six boards.
So we have a drafted permit that's in the to-be side folder.
Listen up, listen up.
We have a drafted special permit that's in the to-be side folder.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Five minutes. They have a separate meter or not?
No.
No, one meter, and that discourages renting now.
Really? You can only have one meter.
The grid doesn't want to support two.
Okay, anybody else on the board, questions, comments? Okay. Trace?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for 102 Perry Street.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z.
Make a motion to grant the accessory apartment special permit for 102 Perry Street.
Second.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike G. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I am.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. You're all set.
So we'll be in touch. There's an appeal period that we'll have to wait until that passes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Afternoon. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, second item on the agenda.
CMRPC Lakeside Residential, Original Housing Needs Study.
Good evening. Thanks everybody. Ron Baron with CMRPC. I came for a couple reasons tonight. One was to give you guys an update on the lakefront zoning project that we had started a little while ago. Get a couple of things clarified before we move forward. And the second thing was to talk about another project that's starting to take shape. We got a grant, we got a grant to do a housing study for, for three towns, including Douglas, Upbridge, and Mendon. And we are going to be kicking that off, and I want to talk about that a little bit. So I think we'll start off, since it's on the agenda this way, we can start off talking about the lakeside zoning piece, if we could. I have a map of the proposed district. I don't know if you guys want me to sort it out here, or I don't actually have a...
Throw it on table.
Okay. So I just had a couple of questions about it, and I wanted to get a couple of points of clarification based on the amendments as they are. So on this map, this map shows the current zoning. All of the purple areas are the areas that I've discussed with Les Stevens and, okay. So the...
Throw it off the floor.
What's that?
Sorry, Aaron was referencing these ones here along Cedar Street.
Oh, well, I see.
So the purple, Ernie, if you need to stand up, the purple would be the lakeside zoning areas that we would look to put into the lakeside zoning area that we discussed our previous meeting. So there's Manchog up here. This is the small pond rez, north side, consider north side, Ron. And then this is the south side rez. This is the island road, and then this is northwest main, and then this cottage colonial. This is Bad Luck along southwest main, and then there's the reservoir. The piece in yellow is the piece that I talked to Ron about removing, because that was the state land that was accidentally placed.
I have, I have a question written on there. I left it in because I wasn't sure why that wasn't being included. I found out after I printed this map that it was the state land. I was looking at something else.
Yeah, and there was a parcel that was accidentally, which was over here, that was referenced, that was taken out as well.
Yeah, and there was another piece that was like, it was actually a cul-de-sac, and it got flagged.
Yeah.
So we, I took that out as well.
So that's kind of where we stand.
So most of this does what, you know, we talked about, sort of obviously the goal of this originally was to say, you've got all of these non-conforming lots, particularly around the waterfront, want to find a way to make them conforming, so that the people who own those properties can transfer them, et cetera. The thing I wanted to clarify before we go forward is that the...
What did you say? So make them conforming so they can transfer them? We're not doing that.
That was not the goal.
Yeah, we, they're not, the transferring is not an issue of any lots right now. I mean, you can transfer any deed, so I just want to talk about that.
Yeah. It was, it was to make these lots more conforming, to reduce the burden on the town services from the ZBA process, and put them into a zoning area.
So lots that have existing structures on them?
Existing structures also in this area that were smaller lots that were, you know, dated back into the 1920s, you know, well before zoning to put them in. So if they wanted to do a shed, or they wanted to do a deck on their property, they could without triggering the ZBA process, which is a burden to the town and the resources of the town, because the amount, you know, that the applicant has to spend out-of-pocket fees associated with that, with the engineering costs and the filing fees and everything like that, town collects a small, modest donation, you know, donation of like $300, but it ends up being, you know, probably about $3,000 on the applicant. So we're trying to make it easier for the people who are in these areas and stuff like that, to make it, you know, more ideal for them to improve their properties and be conforming and stuff like that, because a number of the applicants we've seen, you know, from ZBA and stuff like that, have been in these areas.
Improve the property is, is what I was going for, and I misspoke. I apologize for that.
My wife says, "I don't listen." Must be just there.
Well, and you know, sometimes words just start falling out of my mouth, and I apologize.
No, no, no.
So as, as with the, so we've got the zoning area, and there's a series of changes to the appendices for the dimensions that add the lakefront zoning and reduce the zoning to 5,000 square feet. The one thing I wanted clarification on is the way that this geography is laid out, it does capture a number of parcels that are large enough that with that 5,000-square-foot zoning, there's the potential for, for them to be subdivided.
That's not going to happen.
Yeah.
We need to make sure that doesn't happen.
No, this is not going to happen. So I think, you know, we exchanged an email, and I know, I don't know if Bill did it print, or it wasn't printed out in here. In his email, you know, I think one of your concerns, Ron, was you came back and you thought there was going to create 1,000 new units and stuff like that. So it doesn't create any, 1,000 new, it doesn't create 1,000 units and stuff like that. Every lot has to meet Title V, so even though it's slightly bigger than a 5,000-square-foot lot, some of these are, are, they're still not RA-zoned, so that they're less than the two acres. So the ones that have been excluded, that are still in white, that still touch the bodies of water, is because they are RA-zoned, they still meet the requirement from that standpoint of, of area. So the ones that are purple, that we're targeting for lakeside residential, are the smaller lots that are less than, don't have the 200 feet of frontage, don't have the two, you know, two, two acres of a footprint.
Well, and yeah, I mean, I am, the, the 1,000 square lots is literally just taking all of the land there, slicing it by 5,000, and so it's, I'm not saying that that's what's going to be.
Well, we don't even want that equation.
You say that, you say that. I'm seeing houses built on Manchog, on the southern side. Those lots, if they're 1,000 square feet, you're pushing it, and they're going to bring them home.
Yeah. No, no, I know.
They're posted stand, right on the corner.
So I know what you're talking about. Mike, can I cover that?
So, aren't they making...
Those were pre-existing structures, pre-existing structures.
Torn down?
Correct. Pre-existing structures, let's start with that.
But you're still going to meet the septic system.
Correct, you do, no matter what happens.
So what, don't they make tight systems nowadays?
Yeah, but it's not allowed.
No, that's not allowed.
It's not allowed anymore?
It's only allowed if a system fails, and you can't increase the number of bedrooms going to it.
Correct.
All right. So if you have a...
And you had to have a pre-existing structure, though. You can't have just a raw piece of land.
So an existing...
You can't have a raw piece of land and turn around.
I, I just don't want to see us getting bit on them changing something. You know what I'm saying, down the road? Right now, we're saying, right now, we're saying that it can't be done, but in 10 years from now, they might come out with some way where it can be done.
I think the purpose of this, let's not lose sight of what the purpose was. We identified residents in town that have an issue because they have an existing structure. They have to get relief every time they want to do some minor improvement to their property. The goal of this was to take those existing occupied structures and allow them relief by having an overlay district that grants them that relief. If it's an existing structure, that's...
But none of those, if under the two-acre 40, you know, it would not, 200-foot frontage would be allowed to be broken up, no matter what.
Can I, can I just add to this?
You changed it to zoning to 5,000 square feet.
No, it's not.
But it doesn't...
But that doesn't address subdivision, subdividing lots. It means setbacks.
Yeah, I can argue that.
So the only, the only way this work, like, the only way you can make a 5,000-square-foot lot work, okay, again, I lived in Webster before.
Yeah.
Town water and town sewer in the street.
Yeah.
So you can tie into that.
Yeah.
If you just have a 5,000-square-foot lot, you would need the sewer, no matter, town sewer, no matter what you do, if you had a 5,000-square-foot lot.
Right.
There's, there is no plan in the next 30, 40 years for the town to bring sewer all the way around any of these bodies of water.
Correct.
Right? So in the next 40 years, there's no, so a 5,000-square-foot lot with no structure, okay, will, cannot be developed upon, okay? Subdividing it, subdividing it and stuff like that.
Well, there's new structures going in at the terrace. Brand-new on a 5,000-square-foot lot.
Pre-existing? No.
Replacing something they tore down, a lot of them, right?
There's at least lot, one lot that I saw where if you took your 20-foot of frontage and divided it up, you could get 30,000, 20,000 square feet.
You can bring them pre-existing, so in existence at the time of the adoption, so it's not subdividable.
Yeah, right.
I mean, that's what we're...
That's what we're trying to go towards, Mike.
Right, as long as we have language in there. Right, but as long as there's language in there, it says it can't be subdivided.
That's what I'm saying, good language, that it can't be, yeah, we're all saying the same thing, for sure.
Yeah.
And then how do you get a well 100 foot from a septic, if the lot's only 100 feet deep and 50 by 100, you're not going to quite get that in?
You request waivers.
When we're long gone, who knows, who knows what's going to be around and be available to do? That's what I'm getting at.
I guess, to your point, if you have a 10,000-square-foot lot, we don't want that 10,000-square-foot lot subdivided to two, two buildable lots.
Two 5,000.
So we just put a clause in that it's exist, in existence, yes.
That's it. There's no subdivision. Right, right. I got no problem with that, as long as there's language.
Because that would be a caveat to the 5,000-square-foot.
Right, right.
Even a 10, I mean, I don't care if you have a 10,000-foot, square-foot lot, you still can't build on it.
Correct. Because you can't meet the separation.
What Trace is saying is, at the time of adoption of this, anything that's in place, that's where it stays.
You can't split two 5s. Correct. And the only way, and the only way DEP or anybody's going to sign off or even meeting your water health requirements is that you have to have water and sewer, okay? Town water, town sewer, to be able to have that, a livable lot that meets everything. We will never have that.
Don't ever say no.
All right. In my lifetime.
I agree with Mike on that.
I've been told that before, too. Don't ever say no. Because guess what? Strange things could happen. You just come in from the southern side on Manchog and take care of that. Now what are you going to do?
I said, hey, I said all the...
So, right, but I'm just saying, don't ever say no, because it could happen.
So, all right, so really what I wanted to get is the sense of if that was actually the goals of the, of the board, is to make sure that, we're trying to limit the opportunities for future subdivisions and only protect the...
Correct.
Because it was a little unclear as we were going back and forth via email, and I just want to make sure that that was where it was.
Just existing, explain your colors.
What's that?
Explain your colors, what's the difference between the blue and the purple?
The blue is the newly developed...
The blue is water. No, no.
The purple is the, is the new bylaw, it's the overlay.
Yeah, so those are the parcels that would be covered by the new zone.
Yeah.
By the new zone.
Yeah.
Right now, they're RA and...
Right now, they're RA, correct. Yeah, with the exception of that one little strip that's highlighted in yellow down at the bottom, which I have to remove, because that should have been part of the state force overlay. Because for some reason, we don't have that layer.
So can I, can I...
We have one overlay.
From a zoning board standpoint, which would have been triggered in many...
Hold on one second. Okay, Aaron has a question.
So there, there are less intense side yard setbacks, front setback, rear setback, which do not exist in the RA. So these are obviously more permissible to 10 feet and such like that. I just want to say, for somebody who's living there, and my neighbor is eight feet off his property, and I'm eight feet off my property, we're already set in that position. So that wouldn't apply in our case, but somebody who is 15 feet off, it can go to 10 feet without any review, meaning by right, because we put this in there.
Yes, correct.
You do feel a compression on these where you live, when you live there. So I live there, so other people live in that. I'm just throwing this out, is that, you know, if it was by special permit, which is mostly use, if there was some review, like, almost a finding, it should go to the zoning for a finding.
No.
That it's not more detrimental. Well, here's the thing, you put a 10-foot, go to 10-foot setback, the guy that lives behind you loses his water view. Okay, so you guys don't care about that.
I don't know, it's his thing.
I just asked you a question.
At this moment, you're supposed to go for Section 6 finding, and that is difficult. Yeah.
Right.
All these people should be going for a Section 6 finding.
Yeah, but you're saying, but you're saying that under this, this would be allowable to go within 10 feet.
No, Devin, I want, if you want to do something within your permissible...
Yeah, but I'm being somebody that lives there, and having foresight on how it's imposing on other neighbors. I'm not fighting this.
And how close are you to your property lines?
Much greater than these, except for the, one of the side yards. The other side yard...
Between the neighbor.
Eight feet on each of us.
Yeah.
So when we... That doesn't mean that's, that's particularly right, I'm just saying that that's what ours is.
That's what these existing lots are like.
But they are like that, they're not all like that.
So when you move in, you know that. Move in, you're in a small, you're in a small area.
Yeah, you're in a small area.
If you want to be in an RA, go buy a farm. If you want to live in a...
Here you have one, here you have a lot.
That's what I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
A lot of people also here have 20 feet between them, or 25, may have. And now, somebody that never can go to 10 feet.
Well, you still, yeah, but you still have to make sure that you maintain the equipment that's on your property.
What's the equipment? What's that have to do with anything?
You still have to access it. And so the reason why we, you know, at our last meeting, the Wallem Lake bylaws and deeds were all written as eight-foot side separations and stuff like that. Side line, back in the day. So that's what we took that off of. And, and I took it based upon, you know, multiple discussions with the Z B A board over, over the years, and that they were never willing to go into less than 10 feet approachment. So, we, you know, what we went with was, was along those lines. Also, with what other towns who have Lakeside Residential, they're very similar to that.
Right, as many people that would be held by this, there is also as many people that could be accreted by this, you know, also. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do it. I'm just saying that there is places where people are 20 feet off their setback, now they go to 10. And this other person now is, say they're 10 or 15, now they're 30 feet or 20 feet away, and it does impact everyone. And it's okay to say that if you don't live there, but then once we live somewhere.
I, I, I used to, you know, Aaron, you say that. I used to live right in this purple area.
Right, but you don't now. So I'm just saying that.
No.
Yeah.
But, but, but we, but amongst neighbors, you had respect for the line of working together on, on both sides.
You had a lot of your setbacks.
It's, it's not. A lot of setbacks, and it was being.
It's not always roasting for everybody.
No, true, true.
But I understand the point.
You know what I mean?
I do, no, I sure mean that. I could give you examples.
For one, Aaron, I agree with you that if I have, if I'm living in one of these areas and I have a nice beautiful view of the lake.
Right.
I don't want my neighbor putting up something that's gonna block my view.
But they, they can do that. And it doesn't limit it to one story. They could put up a two and, two and a half.
Right.
You know, 35 feet or less.
But it's still within.
What, within what? It's still a conversation. I'm just saying. I'm not fighting back. I'm just saying.
It's no different than me where I'm at. I mean, I had the trees and everything next to me at one time, and now there's a house. It is what it is.
But you might be 35, you might be 40 feet off your property.
You still see the house.
It doesn't matter.
There wasn't a house.
It's exponential. When you're on these lots, everything is exponential.
But they're, but they're, they're within the zoning setbacks.
This would be too, if it's 10 feet.
If this, if this gets passed, yes.
Right.
We have to have a public hearing on this. So people that live in these areas.
Right, but you're already living in a small area.
We'll see who comes to the meetings, and it'll be discussed, and if it's not negative enough, it will lap out.
But it's like saying, a mouse already lives in a small space. I think he could deal with a little smaller. I'm just saying that that's not, these are, you just said, it didn't.
The deeds were written back in the day, long before any of this ever came out.
Right, so, but what's that have to do with?
Hold on. Those deeds, again, I want to reiterate this, because Aaron wasn't here and Ernie wasn't here. The deeds that you're referencing are just Wallem Lake tariffs. We have other properties throughout the town that, that are going to have the same parameters that they're measured against. That's number one. Number two, I also suggest that we talk to the fire chief to see what he would recommend between setbacks between buildings or structures.
I thought you already did that. You told us what it was last time.
No, I said.
You said it was more than 10 feet.
Because you had.
No, I said.
You had this, uh.
One person at a time, one person at a time. Go ahead, Bill.
No, we should get something in writing from the fire chief and solicit his opinion. I know it was an issue up at North Village, and that's why we had the spacing between those structures, which is why I'm raising that question.
It's five and five.
Great, let's talk to the fire chief.
I thought you told us that last meeting that, or did I just imagine that? But you talked to him already, and he said it was more.
He mentioned something to me, yes.
Okay. What did he mention?
But he didn't put it in writing, so I think we should solicit.
What was the distance that he mentioned?
I can't remember.
Okay.
That's why you should put it in writing.
All right.
Well, so when you're at 10 feet, I mean, people have bushes, they have trees on the edges of the property, doesn't mean there's access. There could be no access through there. So, you know, and that's fine if that's.
So it's five and five, I'm saying. 10 feet total.
Was that another place?
Five and five.
This one is 10.
But this is 10.
Right, this is 20. So you're 20 feet between house and house.
No, 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 no. I'm saying for access, if the fire chief has input into it.
No, if, but that's on any property. If I plant bushes or put a fence.
Oh, yeah.
Between my line, I mean, if, you're not gonna control that.
Yeah, well.
So, and if you need to get an excavator, take the trees down, and get any bad gas, that's your problem, because you planted them.
It's always the problem, yeah.
I mean.
The 10, the 10 is, you know, needs to be reviewed, that's all. I mean, I'm less.
There's two sides to the story.
Correct, Eric.
That's good, thanks, Aaron.
Oh, I'm not. I just want to bring it up. This is why, when the public watches us, they want to know we're looking at all sides of this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead. Two, two things. The original intent for this whole thing was to give relief to these people that are already in pre-existing dwellings. So when we, if we go ahead with this and we draft this for a town meeting, we have to make sure that it's written up so that this problem of lots that are in this zone now can't be subdivided.
Yeah.
All right, it's still gonna have to meet the, it's gonna, it's still gonna have to meet the requirements that it has to meet right now if you want to put a new structure up.
The board of health.
This is.
That.
According to Bill's comments here, even with the suggested changes, there's still gonna be a ton of non-conforming little lots out there, I mean.
No doubt.
The 5,000 square feet.
No doubt.
So you're not helping anything on that issue.
No, no.
Well, you, you mean without a dwelling on it. Is that what you're talking about? You said that the, the number of feet that, the number of these properties which are about 16%. 5,000 square feet, they meet that.
Ron's.
There's a number of lots out there that are 5,000 square feet that don't have a dwelling on them.
Correct. What, what was missing here?
What would be the effect on them people? They could still put up a house, no.
It doesn't say, really.
Why not?
If, so, so what's missing here is my reply back to Ron, and, and I don't know why that got dropped off, but to highlight, basically, Ron was understanding that this could trigger a thousand new units and stuff like that, which is, which is, now we've corrected, corrected that. If it's a 5,000 square foot vacant lot, okay?
Then it's gonna be vacant forever.
It's, unless you meet the Title V requirements and separation of your well, septic, it will be vacant forever.
And the setbacks.
And the setback requirements and separation.
Is there any, is there?
Separation.
Yeah.
Separation, not, not just setbacks, separation.
What do you mean separation?
You have the separation between your well.
Oh, yeah, 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 we agree.
Well, if, if the goal is to provide relief to the existing dwellings that are occupied, then you have a 5,000 square foot lot that doesn't have a structure on it.
Currently.
They should have to go through the process.
Of course they should, yes.
This, this is almost bringing back the existing non-conforming lots.
Even if they're in the zone.
Right, right.
So if you have an existing non-conforming lot, created at a certain time, whatever time, we can say before the adoption of this bylaw, you should be able to, if you meet all the requirements from board health, that you should be able to build on that lot.
I agree.
Yeah.
That's what we're not saying, though.
What's, what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Right, so Bill's saying the opposite.
I know.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I think they need.
This is an actual district change. This is not an overlay. This is not exclusive, you know.
So, I mean, but then again, you went and bought a piece of property, say, 10, 15 years ago, figuring someday you'd like to put up little summer cottages or whatever. Now we do this, and all of a sudden you're told, you own the land, good luck, you can't do nothing with it. I mean, what good is that? That, that's more detrimental than what we're trying to fix.
No, no, I agree, we should.
You're already saying it at this time anyway.
No, we'll take a.
So I agree that if somebody has a 5,000 square foot lot, like Trace was saying, and we have this adopted, and they meet the cut, the setbacks that are required.
Right.
And then they, and then they get through conservation, they get all the separation, you're talking from well and whatever, they should be able to do it.
Right.
Not further subdivide, like a 10,000 square.
No, no, no.
If you own a 10,000 square foot lot.
It stays 10,000.
That's what we need to have that in the bylaw.
Right, if it stays, if it's.
Under the definition.
What do you say?
I don't think that's wise.
I don't either.
What, what do you mean?
Because it's encouraging the development.
We're changing the, we're changing the zone.
In my opinion, it should be an overlay district.
Only, not, not changing.
That doesn't, that, that, that doesn't necessarily say someone who owns a 5,000 square foot lot that's not built upon, that's not saying he can't build on that lot. That's saying that he'll go through the process of regular zoning process.
I always thought this was an overlay.
I always thought it was an overlay.
Why, why would?
It's an overlay. It's gonna be, it has to be an overlay.
It's in the table. It's proposed in the table.
As, as a zoning, you can't overlay, overlay, overlay of an overlay. And that's what you've done, this, this town has done, and.
Well, there's no overlay now on this.
No, no. There, there's an overlay for water district. There's an overlay for the aquifer. There's an overlay for everything else. It gets buried and lost. So you want a zoning area, so you are meeting the zoning requirements. You can't go in with an overlay. So that, that's the first thing you gotta understand. You can't go in with an overlay, because then you still don't meet the zoning requirement.
But you're sort of smart zoning in a way then.
No.
Because you're leaving gaps of other lots right adjacent to, between this one here and.
They're budding, and then.
I'd like to hear from Ron though, on his, on that, on spot zoning, because I'm sure he knows a lot more than us.
Yeah, please, Ron.
Do you feel this is a spot zoning?
That's a little bit of a tough question. Strictly speaking, I would say no, because you're covering much more than a single parcel. You're covering multiple areas of the town, however it is very broken up. And as a person, as someone who is not a lawyer, I wouldn't necessarily be able to say that that wouldn't be 100% free of legal challenges for spot zoning. But, I mean, you're covering multiple areas of the town, and it's following, it's just the fact that it's following parcel lines, and you're trying to capture only the ones that are below a certain size.
Right. Similar to what we did for the commercial.
Yeah.
You got a commercial here, you got a commercial here.
Can I ask, do we have lot coverage requirements in this town? We don't.
No.
So, in fact, I mean, obviously, what dictates that is septic and well and federal cap and all that.
We're relying on, you know.
That.
People to do their due diligence.
But in fact, somebody could fill up this thing and somehow, right, build a big massive house on a very small piece of land if they could somehow get the approvals for septic and water.
30 by 70. 30 by 70, if you're on a 5,000 square foot lot.
For the size of the house we put there, 21, 100 square feet footprint, so you could build a 4,000 square foot house, two-story, and have these big bedrooms. See, that's something we should.
That's what's.
Where do you put your well?
Over here.
Where do you put your?
Well, that's what I'm saying. So what I'm asking is, that's what dictates everything, is the well in the, in the actual septic.
Which we now, now choose into that footprint. Now choose all into that footprint.
Right, again, I wanted to bring it up to the people, so, and say the things obvious, that I am coming in this town, knowing other towns that all have that lot, so I just wanted to ask that.
If I, if I may just touch on the, the question between an underlying, having a base zone and an overlay, the one advantage I would see to doing it as an overlay would be that you have the opportunity to write a detailed bylaw that goes in as a separate section, that you can then put in all of the, the constraints that you were talking about. You can put some of that in if you're doing it as the underlying zone. You can add that as an amendment, but you're after gonna add that as an amendment to the, the establishment section, definitions, et cetera. So, and you obviously can do that, and you can get some of those connections. But doing it as an overlay bylaw does have the advantage that you can do it separately and have it a self-contained piece that doesn't have to have multiple amendments.
Correct, but, but the problem, the problem with that is, is when you do an overlay, all right, you overlay this district, it gets lost between what this current zoning is and the overlay that's coming over there. So that's, that's the problem.
How does it get lost?
Yeah.
Because, because, because you have another overlay over this as well. You have the aquifer overlay, and you have the water shed district overlay. You have, and now you're gonna put a third one on there. So which, which overlay are we reading? Which, you're gonna mean for the resident? Which one are they gonna?
All of them.
Again, but they all have different rules and everything like that, and you have contradictions.
Yeah, but it's part of the complexity of it, isn't it?
Correct, but you have contradictions of those. So that's, that's the problem.
I think you're gonna get unintended consequences with this as a standalone district.
I agree.
Yeah.
Me too. It's gotta be an overlay component for it.
If, if we're gonna be able to make sure that they can't be divided and things of that nature, a lot easier as an overlay.
In the overlay.
Right. Overzoning, then I think that would be.
Well, we'd be able to define that in the overlay section.
You still can define it in the zoning area.
You can. I mean, there are sections you can do, but you have to, you're gonna have to add multiple amendments to different sections.
Yeah, you have asterisks.
But it's more forcible if it's in there, in the zoning area.
Same enforcement.
Same enforcement.
I mean, and if you're talking about like running into an aquifer, you're gonna run into the same, you're gonna have to look at the aquifer requirements if it falls in an aquifer overlay anyways.
No matter what.
So, so it's not like you get to ignore the, the overlay if it's, if it's an underlying zone. So, I mean, I, I, I see the point of doing it the way that you're, the, the way that you're, you're trying to do it, because you want it to be something that's gonna be in place and sort of immutable. So there's, there's ways to do it.
That's clear to the public. That's the biggest thing, is it's clear to the public if it's in your appendixes and it, and it actually is a zoning area. When it's, when it's in an overlay that we, you know, again, the town has multiple overlays, you know, so it gets very confusing and very puzzling, and that, actually, you're gonna, you're gonna create more of a burden on the town with understanding, understanding the overlay.
It's confusing and now, and I'm sorry, if you buy a piece of property on the lake, you know what you have. I mean, I'm all for trying to get relief to people, but you have what you bought. And if you can't put a shed up because you're too close to the other, I'm sorry, you don't get a shed. You have your house on the lake. You, you can't build a garage. I'm sorry, you can't build a garage. I'm all for helping people and giving them a little bit of an advantage to, to work with their property, but I'm, I'm not gonna take it to the point where we have to worry about 5,000 foot, square foot parcels being developed now. And that's, it can stay the way it is.
That's Mass General law limit for parks to build a parcel.
It's gonna have to be a good, solid law written into this article if I'm gonna present a town meeting.
We have our zoning laws.
These are zoning bylaws and stuff like that. And, and you can put, again, to his point, by doing the zoning, you can put it in there of what the restriction is upon adoption and stuff like that. You're not subdividing.
That's fine, as long as I know it's solid and, and it's gonna, it's not gonna create more problems.
You know, I mean, you know.
You have what you have. You have what you bought. And if you have to go get a special permit to put a shed up, because you're too close to the Navy Yard.
It's gonna have to be asterisks.
If you get it, you don't get it.
Some asterisks along, oh, actually, it's, it's actually in the, in the section.
You know, A V C and down below, it says that in the zone, V L R, that, you know.
No, not to change anything, but see the lines down in the lung here?
I.
And well lots here. Any reason why that stuff was all omitted, or what's going on in the?
That's all the campground area and stuff like that, and I mean, that's the.
No.
This, this is all one continuous, I don't know, I don't know what that one was. I think that was just, that was, I think.
And what's that one right there, and that one?
Yeah. You wanna circle them? Are you taking this back, Ron?
Yeah, I can take that one back.
Circle it.
So this is the, the first pass at the non-conforming lot map that I had done.
Holy mackerel.
Yeah, that's what we have today.
Now, this is based just off of comparison of, of minimum lot size to actual lot size. So if it's, the, the lot is smaller than what your minimum is, it's flat, just not conforming. We're not looking at frontage, we're not looking at anything else. That's all that is.
Right, yeah, because.
So I wanted to see, because it, maybe if there's a.
So, we, we, we had.
Hold on, wrong end.
You had it before we ended this.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We were at it, it's kinda cool. So. What's, what's cool is.
Yeah, see, they're all shaded in minimum sizes and they're not marked off yet.
Okay, so, so we wanna add those? Circle, circle them on that.
This here all gonna be checked.
Yep.
Are these only ones that exist on structures on them? Do you know?
Well, those are the ones that were flagged by, that was sent to me from the, on the spreadsheet that you guys sent to me. So I haven't cross-checked to see if they actually have.
Oh, okay, guys, guys, listen, he hasn't cross-checked this yet.
Yeah, no.
So he's gonna pick up anything under the, the existing zoning.
So, yeah. So if this zoning gets implemented, how many more non-conforming lots do we have left?
Along the lakeside.
Ooh, I haven't.
That's a tough number to sum up.
No, there.
We're all, we're, we're.
Well, now, and some of these may have excuses for being non-conforming. Like, I don't know what the story is with this.
That's a flexible development.
Yeah, so that's what that looked like to me, so I assumed that's what was going on.
Yeah.
Um, some of these lots may be just.
Old grandfather.
Or that they could, yeah, they could be small lots that are residential, open space, that are just not gonna ever get developed, so you don't really have to worry about it. There's a lot of reasons. There's some like little fragments here that got caught that are just G I S.
That's pre-existing, non-conforming.
That are just sort of artifacts.
So we, so we pick up this mic. So we have this one here.
Yeah.
That's Bad Luck. We have All Along here, which is the reservoir. We have All Along here, which skips, again, skips a couple parcels.
Uh, yeah, right here, you circle.
Circle those two. Circle those two if you want. And then, see how we had to skip the one going across?
Down this here, you have to get looked at.
Yep, okay. And then comes along.
Yep.
And stuff like that.
You skip them all over here.
That's state.
That, uh, that is, is, well, there's three of them together.
Yeah, those, if it's, if they're on here, they showed up in the assessor's use code as primarily residential and in that zone, so.
So, you, that's what I'm saying.
That one, okay. Okay, but the rest is all good.
Yeah.
And then Bad Luck and the rest.
It's the same, right? But if you compare this to that.
Pretty good.
To do a parallel entertainment.
Let's, 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 let's put them in a direction here, guys, so we can move on what I'm hearing.
No, I think it's going right.
I think the intent is, you got, our intent.
Yeah.
Of what we're going for. And then we're still have a lot of non-conforming lots, and we're just gonna have to deal with those.
So, some of these, yeah, some of these are just, I think, will, you'll just have to live with. Like, there are some of these in the, in the town center that you might wanna take a look at.
That's Village Residential and stuff like that. I think they're all been all, so, these were part of another division, subdivision.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Go ahead, stop that.
Our adult entertainment is in the state forest right now. What do you think about that?
Um.
It's here, I have to ask. It's what?
It's, it's legal.
Okay.
For you to put your stick.
It is?
No, no, it opens up the entire town. If it's not a viable place for them to locate, then the town, the entire town.
Like, is that owned by, is that current, that land currently owned by the state forest? Oh, okay, then yes, he's right. Then that's, that is a problem.
So why we, is this, is this commercial?
I guess that's, no, it's a different color red.
No, that's commercial.
That's.
It's not on this map. It's.
Oh, okay. I thought it was a different color red.
It, it was a hatch, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so talk about spot zoning. I mean, we have other problems too.
Yeah. I mean, if you, if you can't build on it, then obviously, somebody could open that up to a challenge.
Okay, okay. Just reminding everybody of that.
So where, where are we going from here now?
I just, I just, I'm sorry.
And all of our industrial land is in the state forest too, on Webster side.
That's where they used to build the masts for trees, for boats. Is there a, we talked about a maximum threshold that if a lot is 38,000 square feet, and it doesn't have the frontage that this new bylaw then gives some humongous lot, I mean, is there like, you have to be at least, to be identifi, I'm just, clarity in my head. To be identified as Lakeside Residential and have the privilege of the setbacks, is there a maximum size that, yeah, tell me.
I know what you're saying.
90,000.
So if somebody has, yeah, 88,000 square feet.
If it's meeting the requirements of current zoning, they're not gonna include it.
No, but say they don't have, say they don't meet the current.
Then it's included.
So they could have an 88,000 square foot lot with, with 140 feet of frontage, and now they're 50 feet away from a side yard, now they can go to 10.
Yes.
Or they could go and buy two or three of these lots.
And they could come in with an A N R plan and create a number of lots out of that.
Yeah, you mean, we're gonna spin scenario, snare off the scenario.
We just said if it was already, what it is, it can't be.
Why not?
We just said.
We're adding it in.
Unless there's language that says they can't.
They can't make a, a, an 88,000 square foot lot into six, 5,000 square foot lots or whatever? Is that what you're saying?
Explain that, why not?
Why not? Because that, because that's not what we think is right.
What we're looking for.
I don't have the legal jargon.
So if it's a separate district, you're telling them that the minimum lot dimension is 5,000 square feet with 50 feet of road frontage, and I have 100 feet of road frontage and I have 10,000 square feet currently, I can't divide that into two lots. Is that what you're saying?
No, we just said that none of these would.
That's why I'm saying it has to be an overlay district.
That's why I'm saying it has to be an overlay.
Oh, I say that too. I agree with that. But, but what I, I guess my question was.
They could, they could, Aaron, if, if we just.
Change the zone.
Great zoning. Great zoning.
It changes that.
No, I don't want that, we don't want that.
No, we don't want that.
So that eliminates, all right, and that's where I'd like, before we get too deep into this, maybe clarification with town council on that stuff, what we can restrict, or we don't.
You're going to have to word, word exactly the question you want.
Okay, yeah. So if we don't do zoning, then we don't have to worry about it. If we don't change zoning and just go overlay, we can put on the restrictions like we're talking about.
Yeah, you wrote, put a new section in the bylaw and then it talks about the parameters that you need. I think that's the easiest thing to do.
I'll go with that. I agree with an overlay.
Savior. And you don't have to go before town, uh, town.
Oh, yeah. If it won't be a zoning change, it'll be an overlay.
What? It's still a zoning change, two thirds.
It's still a zoning change, but it's an overlay district.
District.
It'd be a district.
Right. That also then eliminates spot zoning.
Well, we're going to have a lot of feedback from the, from the public anyway.
Right.
Before then.
Oh, yeah.
What do you mean? So we're going to have to document what the overlay district is because we don't, we don't document our overlay districts as it is.
Sure we do.
You got to document it in a table, an appendix table.
We have a map.
You have it in an appendix table is what I asked you.
It's already. It would have to be in the section, just like the water resource protection overlay district. It goes over the dimensional parameters in there.
But we don't have it in appendix, correct?
You're correct.
Okay, so we need to have it in appendix.
Okay. Well, then you're the planning board.
Well, I'm just saying, then we need to have it in there because now everybody digs through, now you've got, you're going to have more overlay districts than the zoning.
That's right, that's right. Well, I mean, you have the state forest, is that's an overlay?
That's an overlay.
No, that's a separate district.
That's a separate district, okay, all right.
I don't even know why I pointed that out.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay. So that's in there, but that's, yeah, so.
Right there, lime green.
Okay, but my bad.
No, I mean, this is also really, it's, and it's needed.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's needed very much so.
And I think this is also heading into your second topic about housing.
Oh, yeah, I completely forgot about that.
We need a lot of help, yeah, that's okay. We need a lot of help in Douglas extending services to make sure that we can, you know, build outside of the village residential. We need to expand our horizons using zoning. The zoning has not been updated, so.
There's more green here, there's more state forest here, and there's some more in here, you might want to take a look.
Yeah, I know.
That's true. The reason behind that, Aaron, is when the state forest, the map, when that district was established, that's the limits of the state forest at that time.
At that time.
So it's not just because the state acquires more land, we're changing our district.
Right.
Yeah, but I think.
But it should reflect.
I think, well, I think, I think we need to reflect that, and I think we need to reflect where the state owns and that.
Right, all, all this is all state.
Right, and all of this, and up in here.
In the industrial.
So Ron, if you can pick that up, if you can.
No, 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 that's beyond the scope.
Yeah, that's beyond the scope.
To color? Well, how hard is that to do?
It's difficult. That's our zoning map. That's our zoning map.
We have a stated as zoning.
Yeah, so, yeah, it changes the physical dimensions.
Fair enough.
Something that you guys would have to pass. But I could put you in touch with Matt and talk about our G I S department if you guys are looking to do that. So to talk about the housing piece, talk about it real quick. This project that we are doing, we're doing it with the, the three towns with Uxbridge, Douglas, and Mendon. We're looking sort of at, just like, we were kind of focusing on the towns around the Route 16 corridor. Part of what we're trying to do is we're doing three needs assessments plus a region-wide, pulling in region-wide data. So what we want to do is we're going to, we have, starting off this year, it's going to run until June of 2021. So we're going to do a, an outreach piece, we want to get a vision for each town, we want to pull that into sort of a regional scope so that we can talk between the three towns and hopefully come up with some goals and objectives that could be complementary, get everybody talking about, about how your markets play off each other, but also provide some, some opportunities for you guys to come up with changes that you can do and act at the local level if you, if you feel that that's the need.
I heard 16, Route 16, and I heard housing. What's that have to do with each other? Since 16, we like to develop as commercial, Uxbridge is, Uxbridge is packed with commercial.
Well, I'm not saying that it's, we're not saying Route 16 because that's where you want to put the houses. We're saying Route 16 because that's the corridor that ties the three towns together.
Goes to the.
I want clarity on that.
Yeah, because we're not, we're not saying that, we're just going to be looking at Route 16, we're just saying that because also it prevents people from coming up with acronyms.
So what's the, what's the bent on this? The take on the whole concept of this?
Well, what we want to get is the, we want to get a goal for, we want to get the goals for housing from each of the three towns, we want to try to bring them into a regional framework so that we can talk about where the towns can complement each other in different, talk about housing economics, the whole kind of kit and caboodle. Not to the extent of a master plan, but we're looking at it just from a housing standpoint.
What kind of housing?
It depends on what you, what the town wants, what the town needs. Obviously, there's a lot of different gaps and we're only starting to pull together data. So there's, we'd be talking about housing for seniors, we could be talking about housing for, for young families, we could talk about workforce housing. We're going to have some elements of a housing production plan, but it's not going to be focused on what housing production plans are focused on, which is getting deep restricted housing. We want to look at market rate housing, affordable housing, basically the whole gamut of housing.
What's, what's the end game of the grant? I mean, who put this, is it to create more affordable housing and increase populations in these towns around, at Route 16, which is only one lane, and now is getting a little more crowded, but whatever? Just want to know what.
Good question, Aaron.
Do you have an answer? What?
Workforce housing is different than.
Work what?
Workforce housing is different than affordable housing. There's a separation of those.
And then there's regular housing, workforce housing, and affordable housing. What are you talking about? Tell us what that is, because I don't know.
So there's, there, there's no, to go back to your original point before I talk about that, there's no specific end game for this grant. What this pool of money that was made available by the state is for is to help towns that have set up sort of big goals or have goals from other planning exercises, but have never actually tried to implement them, and try to get something where you can come up with an actionable, some kind of change. If it was, you know, some towns might want to pursue community preservation, some towns might want to do a housing trust, some towns might want to say, oh, let's do complete streets and go through that process. You might want to do a zoning change.
So we can, we can customize that to what our town is looking to do when we're working with our economic development committee and developing commercial and stuff like that. I wanted to ask that question because I know that we're not one, I mean, I'm a newer guy, but we're not one to say we want to add 5,000 houses to this town.
We need economic development.
Because we're dead on the wall, you know? But we need economic development.
But one of the reasons why we wanted to do this is because we've been looking at some projections that have been done by, internally by us and by the Donahue Institute and other sources that are projecting that this area, particularly like around the Blackstone Valley and the 146th corridor, is expected to start getting more of the development. It's going to start moving down here because you're seeing pressure, people are getting pushed out of Providence area, they're getting pushed out of the Lister area, and this is where it's all converging, is going to be down.
But our town is unique of all the other towns.
Yeah.
If you're talking about Mendon, you're talking about Uxbridge, we're very unique in regards to our ratios of, I'm trying to be a fast study here, guys.
Awareness versus.
Right, right, right. So, because, okay, enough said.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to do it as a multi-town study because there's pieces that you guys don't have and you're just not going to have that maybe Uxbridge does, maybe Mendon does, maybe one of the towns outside on the 146th corridor might be able to take that data, take it into account, and then you can fold it into your own planning process internally so that you're not necessarily trying to be everything to everybody and not accomplishing anything. You know what I mean?
How about a 10 millennial grant for sewer?
You can pursue it if you want.
So you're looking for like volunteers in the regional committee or something like that?
So what we're looking to do is, we were just talking about it tonight, what we'd like to do is we're going to have a meeting on November 7th where we're going to invite all the planning boards, any councils on aging, selectmen, basically anybody that thinks that they want to talk about this, this topic. We want to pull together three little, three steering committees, one in each town, and then we're going to have quarterly regional meetings throughout this project, so that way we're going to be doing town-focused, but we're going to try to bring it back together so that we can look at what everybody's doing, what everybody wants to do, what everybody's goals are, and see how they communicate and collaborate.
What's the total grant?
The total grant.
For all three towns? It's public, it's public knowledge.
It is public knowledge, but unfortunately, I don't have the number off the top of my head. In fact, they asked me the same question earlier today and I.
But you can get that.
But I can give, yeah, I can give it to you. I think it's like between 30 or 45,000 dollars, something like that.
Who's they? You said they?
State.
Oh, no, we met.
Town planner and town planner for each town.
Yeah, we met this afternoon.
The grantee, grantor, yeah.
Yeah, just to talk about strategy and how we want to pursue it, and this is the approach that, that's.
So the other, the other towns have town planners?
Yes.
Uxbridge and.
Well, Mendon is a, Mendon has an affordable housing coordinator, who basically is the town planner. So that's sort of his default decision.
I see them as the backers of all this grant, I see 40B written all over, so that's what I'm taking in.
Who is the backers of the grant?
What's that?
Who are the backers of the grant?
I would say affordable housing and 40B.
Oh, the affordable housing department?
No. No, this is the, this is, this grant comes from the executive office of energy and environmental affairs, which is sort of a funny office to come through. But really, the, the goal of this was that they were, that office was looking for money to help towns implement goals from other plans, from things that.
Well, it sounds like somebody mandated them to give out some money.
But, okay, yeah, go forward.
We're going to have them anyway.
Yeah, so and there's no, there's no target to get more affordable housing, there's no target to get a, a.
There is a target.
Well, I'm not attached to this grant. There is a target at the state level, but I'm saying not attached.
The governor is trying to say affordable housing.
So we need to be loud and clear on what we think we need, not what the state needs.
I know, I know. So if you don't modernize your zoning, then.
Are you nominating yourself?
You're forcing. You're going to want us to meet as a group?
Are you taking these?
Are you taking those with you, Ron?
Um, I was thinking actually of leaving the.
Purple?
No, um.
This one?
The, non-conforming.
Okay, yeah. No, 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 see, that one. No, 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 that one's good to leave.
Yeah, that's what we said. So that meeting is going to be again November 7th, we've got that room in Uxbridge, and we'll be sending out a, a, save the date to all the planning board members and all of that.
Uxbridge has more meeting rooms than we do, so they have more business and they.
They have more business.
Yeah, they have a lot of them right now. We actually had a big meeting at the running fire.
Mendon's small. Mendon's got a large population.
What was that?
Uh, a couple months ago.
This is yours.
All right, so we're all set?
Thank you, Ron.
All right, thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yep, not a problem.
All right, stay in our plan.
Okay.
This is who? 6,000 people, Mendon.
And gross, bro.
Sure thing.
Like 89.
Mike Gladby from Allen Engineering.
See, that's the little town of Mendon.
It was.
Yes.
This is for you. That's the lot.
Because we wanted to say something.
Yes, that's the new rules, yeah. He's good.
These curvy lots.
Yeah. So I'm Mike Gladby here from Allen Engineering, representing, uh, Orson Corporation, and we're presenting a, two lot, two lot cut A and R plan.
Yeah, we're passing them around. I'm not sure where they started. Yeah, I'll just start one. Hold on, we'll get these all passed out then we can.
You guys got my comments?
Oh, did you want to add them in? Yeah. The note, you writing down notes? With the fire thing? With the fire, the letter, with the fire thing, the separation?
Yeah.
The board wants me to ask the chief.
Yeah. I didn't see you write it down.
Okay, board ready? Okay, go.
Okay, so we, yep, again, I'm Mike Gladby with Allen Engineering, again, representing Dan Heaney Orson Corporation, we're presenting two lot A and R plan on U Street. Both lots are conforming, created to be conforming, with minimum of 200 feet of frontage and at least 90,000 square feet, and have adequate access off of U Street, a public way. This is pretty sub-explanatory, it's, they are both cut out of a 47 acre remaining parcel of land with 740 feet remaining frontage, and again, they are conforming to the current zoning. They do have the drugs on the side, the reason we created that is because there was some loans over to the west end of the property that we wanted to give some more room for a building, building for.
Do you know? Dan submitted the $50 deed.
Yes, you said it today, but.
Well, you didn't tell me.
Yeah, he did call me and tell me that's in the.
Bill, any questions, concerns?
No, we'll throw it down.
The, the one thing is, is that the parcel over here is referencing the deed, but the parcel that actually taken the land from isn't referencing the deed that they own.
Well, we do, we do.
Do you mean the house?
The deed references.
But it's not on the, it's not on here, the plan. If this one is the parcel, we're pointing that, it should be here on the, on the parcel that's here, taken from.
Well, because it's not referencing Tetra.
Correct, it should reference where the house is that this land is being taken from. It should be on the plan, not, not off of the note area. We've ever done that.
It has to be on file if they're going to use a stamp. Phil, do you notice that the Tetra stamp is on?
That's a rubber stamp.
I spoke with Veronica on the phone about it, and I'm satisfied that she authorized this.
She's out of state, basically.
Yeah, I was pushing.
Isn't she saying that it was, oh.
No, it was a stamped signature, so I questioned it.
Right, like I am.
Well, you are.
Yeah, good catch.
And, and so I, Dan had Veronica call me and I asked her some questions that I knew Veronica would know, and she answered them.
What's the question, whether or not she what?
There's a stamp for her signature, not an actual signature.
It's not a real signature.
It's not a wet signature.
Anybody could stamp it. Anyone can use a stamp like this.
Who is that?
Yeah.
I'm Jake today.
You know, as long as it's understood, and I just want to make an order of it. It's a rubber stamp and not an actual signature on that.
Let me do that if you can. Mike, what's the speed limit? Mike, what's the speed limit?
Yes.
I mean, these meet Ashtoe, I want to be clear about this, because some of these distances are kind of short.
We checked it for thirty mile an hour.
Hard to read.
For thirty mile an hour.
Which is, what's the Ashtoe standard?
That's what thirty, for thirty, that's what we, we mothered for, for thirty, it's like two hundred, it was two hundred feet, I didn't write down what the standards were, but they do exceed what, what Ashtoe requires. For thirty mile an hour.
Bill, did you not get a chance to see this before? And approve it?
No, I reviewed it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, my notes are in.
There's an existing drango to the catch basin, what is that, all four?
Discharges on the ground.
Just charges on the ground there, and there's a couple right next to it.
From the street?
Yep. Yes.
One, there's two, two catch basins up here.
So, is it easement from the town, are they?
Yes, it's an easement called the town, yeah.
Where does it say that?
It's in the know-it-thing.
Yeah, and I can write the deed book and things on the my own hand if you want.
You know that, Ernie?
Do I know if it's an easement?
Do you know that there's, yeah, that there's a discharge easement?
Yes, yes, I do.
Yeah, okay.
I put it, I, I don't...
You did it, except for yourself. Physically, yeah.
I know, yeah.
Ernie knows, Eric does.
Okay, so this person knows?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I believe it was signed off on the, before, definitely.
Okay, so it's not wet there?
It goes out into the field.
Okay, does it go like to here?
Uh, yeah, it, it, I don't think it travels that far.
Okay.
I mean, along that whole section of the road is, is a, a trench, an open trench, not with any pipe or anything in it. That, it goes through a pipe, crosses the road, there's two catch basins tied into it, they all go across to the same area.
Okay, that's not tied into that D W on the back, right?
No, there's no well on there, probably had to check the property, check the...
Okay, all right.
That's on the other side of the roof from where these...
Okay.
Basins are down here, on the other side of the roof. I agree with that. There's a catch basin, there's a catch basin right by the barn, there's three actually, there's one by the barn, one across the street from the barn, and then one across the street.
It's like...
Those are the only two that's down. Three of them, yeah. There's three of them that tie in right there.
Good for you, glad we got you.
You know, animal way of that. You all settled now?
So, Ernie, what do you think of this?
All right, good. He meets all the requirements.
All right, well, so...
Well, I feel that it was reviewed before, same time. Phil did review it.
He said he did.
Yeah.
Yeah, he reviewed it on the fourth, but not the new plan.
I just asked, I just asked.
Unless Bill has any more questions, yeah.
Plus, did you not hear us, sorry? I just asked, because...
It's a full movement.
It has to be.
No, I don't think so.
No?
It's always a full movement.
You know the foods too?
Yeah, no matter what is a full movement.
I know.
Yes, fine. Meets.
Whatever your thing is. Well, so, you live over there?
Yeah.
So, the big one is over here, right, the one that used to have the sign on it about the...
You're talking?
The library or something?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know it was there.
Yeah, yeah, crossing, crossing the house.
Yeah, crossing the house.
Yeah.
Need a motion, Aaron?
If, Bill, you all set?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
I'll make a motion to endorse A and R Plan for Iverson Court on fifty-two U Street.
Second? Okay, on Mike's second, if Mike's changed any further discussion.
It is fifty-two U, right?
Yes.
All of them gave up?
Hi.
Hi. All of them staying, motion carried.
What is the upper?
One mile out of sign.
And all of them are folded nicely, so we can just stamp that. Only one.
They had to pick it up.
Oh, oh, nice, this is the first time, no paper.
Was there little marquis? Marquis Marcus.
Perfect.
We need a magic pen.
You get the gold star.
I do?
Gold star.
It's a couple in there.
Like, is this one plan?
Sure, Bill.
Bill's gonna scan it in, email it to the project.
I don't know what...
We're saving trees.
You got one deal left?
And money, which is, which is better, I think.
Let's see.
Better than trees, right?
Now, let's try it.
I think we have two.
Now that, um, Timberland's planting, how many trees, did you see that?
No, I didn't.
Um, twenty-five, no, I think? To twenty, twenty-five? I'll get you the number. Yeah, no, uh...
Mikey.
I don't know where it is.
You brought Mike's stamp.
It's in the United States.
Okay.
Yeah, but she did it on that one.
Yeah.
Keep that covered so it don't dry out.
It's usually, Aaron.
What do I get?
A lot of huddle tonight.
Oh, no.
Oh, my goodness.
I am just bringing...
Fifty million over the next five years.
Really?
For what?
Your salary.
Um, Tem, Timberland.
Timberland?
Um, yeah, Timberland is planting fifty million trees over the next five years.
Who's Timberland?
Awesome.
The shoe company.
Yeah.
Oh, boots size.
The what?
Boots.
Yes, exactly.
Timberland boots.
You hear what Lego's doing, right?
No, what?
Anybody in the world, they'll send them prepaid, um, postage, and if they're done with their Legos, they're grown up, they'll pay to send everything back to Lego, they'll wash them, and they'll donate them to Boy Scout, Boy Clubs, Boys, uh, Boys and Girls Clubs.
Recycle, yeah.
No, don't, no, don't.
I hate stepping on those.
Don't eat them.
I got a ton of them.
We found two.
Yeah, I hate, you know, you step on one.
There were the black, yeah.
My sister, I'll be wanting to sign this.
Yes.
And actually, it is, um, around the world.
We have some patient people. I've always liked that property.
Oh, yeah. You were there, first?
Yeah.
Nice lot.
I don't want the big, big...
Sign it up, sign it up.
No, there's only one. You're only doing one now.
Then you don't have to worry about trees.
Oh, really? Instead of us signing five, six of them, yeah.
How do they, who generates the other ones?
Scan them in and email them.
You coming to zoning meetings?
It's perfect, I love it.
I don't know, is this with Ross?
You're so perfect. Yeah, that little line should be in the center.
See you later.
Actually, I, I think it's north village. Now we shoot for the middle, so you, yeah, it needs to be in the middle.
Yeah, it moved in the middle.
Yeah.
Out of that cataract surgery?
I should knap it, that's why I didn't recognize.
Actually, good, right? Yeah.
He's got twenty-twenty. Well, I followed Ernie's advice, so, find him. Okay, we ready, board?
We're getting easier now.
Go for it.
Just have to stamp that one, keep passing that one around.
We're down to discussion, getting busy.
All right, discussion. McIntyre Barn, northeast Main Street.
No, that's it, one, that's it.
Yay.
Are they here?
Yeah.
I'm very happy about that.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Problem with it?
Hello, everybody, I'm John Palmer from McIntyre Loom.
Tom McIntyre, also from McIntyre Loom, also KTKT, the property owner. The starting engineer.
Dan McIntyre.
Dan McIntyre.
Hey, Dan.
Hey.
You get it, yeah?
Yeah.
Cool.
I'm here.
So, what I would suggest is they just go through the letter with us, and the responses that they have, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Does everybody have a copy?
Yes.
Yeah, come on down.
Started.
So, number one was about a surety bond, um, this letter that was sent to us was drafted in September. Our surety bond came up for renewal on October first. You know, for the past fifteen years, we've always continued the bond, um, you know, a replacement bond, or, you know, continue...
Continue with each other.
Continue with the bond. Um, so it was in the works anyways when the letter came out, but since that date, um, the town's asked for it to be in a different format, so we've been back and forth with our insurance company a couple times and with town council. And we have a, we were given a sample format in the letter that we received, we finally have one that we think is very much the same as that, we're just waiting for town council approval, I have a copy here if you guys would like to see one.
What's, what's a different format of, related to that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's basically the language that accompanies the bond value, um, so Jay has certain things that he looks for in these things, and granted, you know, they evolve over time.
Correct.
And back then, clearly, they didn't have the same requirements that we currently have, so we want to make sure it meets our current requirements.
So, we, uh, we, sorry. Is, is this store, uh, underwritten by the same bond company that you guys were using initially?
So, uh, the bond that we had in place until five was written by Hanover, uh, they submitted a form, was, I travel was submitted one, then I, this one's from, you know, it's back to Hanover.
Okay. And I just received an email from Jay about forty-five minutes ago saying he was in court all afternoon, so we, we are submitting this signed for our insurance company on presumption that Jay Talon is going to approve it. If not... Sorry, if not, you will, um...
Uh, no.
Get back to us with any changes, we won't get that, we'll be in place, assuming it's okay to our insurance company. Yep. He was in court today, so he couldn't get it, but...
This is the original.
You were copying on that email.
Can you have one?
I'm all set.
I, um, we're all, yeah, we got enough copies out here, you have one, Jay?
I'm gonna look with the years.
We have one, yeah.
Jake has one.
Jake has one, yeah, okay, all right.
Um, this is what we're hoping town council will accept, uh, this is close to the sample that we were given, um, assuming that's the case, it'll be stamped and the original will be sent to the town to replace the one that is already in place. So, I have this, I think, from one.
Yeah, any, any other questions on...
And this was the updated bond value, Phil?
Uh, no, I think they're holding the same value that they continually held, correct?
Correct. Good. It means just over sixty on that first, just over a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So, so with that one, you know, we'll wait to hear from Jay and we'll wrap that up, I'm sure, between...
I think it will be, you know, assuming it's approved, which we're assuming, we'll be, we'll submit, um, hit the, you know, sign and copy.
Yep, yep.
And the original will be, you know, come once we receive it.
Right.
And have it go to your office.
Right. Okay.
Um, number two is please submit a detailed schedule and timeline associated with the site restoration, the board's consideration, um, you know, when the surety bond is provided, so, uh, on this letter that we submitted, the one that we were gonna ask, um, we plan on, uh, and Bill was at the site last week and he saw an area, we, we have an area that's just about ready, uh, once it's the pile that was out at the day, you were there, it's gone, we're gonna have them back, they'll check it out. Uh, we have the paper waste material that we were using on the other slopes, that you also saw those, that look great.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, we'll spread that out, it'll be out there inspected as we go, and we'll get it. That section anyways, seeded and, uh, seeded this year.
Yep.
And then we'll, we'll touch it up in the spring as needed. As far as next year's concerned, uh, we have another section, uh, that we plan on doing on the northern section of the property, um, basically from the east boundary to the west boundary, and from the northern boundary, about three hundred feet or so. You know, anything that's open right now will be closed, but, and that's, that's the twenty-twenty, um, by the fall of twenty-twenty, that'll be done. Okay, keep going. So, and then, from that point, we, uh, we need to, I guess, get in front of the board, and we need to talk with you as to how we go about, um, continuing the business we currently do there without, you know, reclaiming a little bit, because if we claim, reclaim everything, you know, we're out of the job. So, you know, the way we have it set up right now, we need to reclaim everything, so we need to come before you guys, try to figure it out in the meantime.
So, as I explained to them, they have a couple of options, they can seek relief from restoration of the floor area, see what they're doing, if they have a current operation where they're processing materials and creating a product and selling that. Um, so, I think they have a couple of options, they can stop doing that, restore the site, they can seek relief from the board, and the relief can be granted or not granted by the board, or they can go through site plan review, and if that's, if it's triggered, which I don't know if it is, um, and then get a permit to, to have that operation. So, so they, they need to figure out that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, 'cause you're bringing in, screen and process and turn them back up.
Right.
So, you want to keep a floor area open that you can do that in.
So, what's the zone that you're in?
Industrial.
Industrial, and what would you, what are you considering yourself as? Um, what activity under industrial? Anything?
I guess a general industrial operation.
I think, I think it was self-process.
Processed, that's what I heard.
Um, that's inside a building?
Mine don't even be on yet.
No.
Why not?
So, so what I would suggest is, you know, they take a look at that, they figure out which direction they want to head in.
Yeah.
And then, once they, they realize that, they, they communicate that with us.
That's fine, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm gonna come down to the end.
Mike, you okay with that?
Yeah.
If they figure out what they, what direction they want to go in?
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
All right.
Uh, number three, a current ASBIL plan at the site showing, uh, permitted, working over relative to areas of excavation, etc., uh, and this was, uh, there's a map or a plan that was made by Rosenfeld.
December two thousand, December two thousand and four.
It's the per, it's the ASBIL for the per, last permit that was issued.
Right, so, uh, we need to perform an ASBIL, uh, for the letter and overlay with that plan to show, uh, you know, the differences from then until now. Um, we've, you know, and Dan...
We've retained the land surveying firm to do that, we're gonna have it flown, have it aerial, photograph it, have that played.
They give us a timeline of...
About eight to ten weeks.
Yeah, I'd say you got eight to ten weeks in here.
Yeah, so it's...
So, October, November, before the end of the year.
So, hopefully, December, yeah, we get a good timeline on that. And once we do have it, I'll, we'll reach out, and then we'll obviously get on and discuss it. Uh, monitor wells that were on that plan that we discussed, um, there were, those wells that were on Rosenfeld's plans, they never installed, uh, we weren't aware of the plans, and we never installed them. Uh, we do have a well on the site at the lowest elevation that, um, you know, we, Phil and myself took a look at it the other day, um, which the floor is approximately thirteen feet above water level. Yeah, we don't, there, there aren't three like the plan shows, there, there is one that's, um, witness, you see.
You don't intend to put the other two in, or what's the deal? Phil, what do you say on that?
Well...
You're asking about...
It's, it, the site's tiered, from, from northeast Main Street, it's three tiers pretty much, and the lowest one, the water elevation was thirteen below, and thirteen feet below, and, I mean, this wasn't a monitor wall, it was a manhole with sections.
Okay.
So, I mean, it, it's, it's pretty clear that's where the groundwater...
Okay, I mean, if that's all, I mean, 'cause you're doing a new ASBIL, so you're gonna show that on it and stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah. You know, worried about the water going up the contour of the land and stuff like that? Being Glen Street, you were worried about the con...
No, no, that's true, um, I don't think that that has the same hydrology as Glen Street, again, usually, sand has a very mild elevation change for groundwater. And that would apply in this case, so I would only expect us to get more conservative as the tiers go up.
We're not going below the, uh, ten-foot threshold, right?
No, thirteen.
No, thirteen.
Yeah, no, we're not going below.
Right.
We're maintaining, uh, we're at thirteen feet in there.
But, you know, when they submit the ASBIL, we can take a look at it.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll see it. Number five, areas to the north end of the site that extend beyond the previous permitted limits, and that goes back to that plan again, um, please note that certain regular activities may require special permit, planning boys, area maybe within the two-hundred-foot covered zone of the Monmouth River, and conservation may get involved. Um, and then there was a map that was included in the original letter, so, um, I have a, uh, landmark for Speed Six on Saturday. We're outside of the two-hundred-foot area, we've stopped any activity in that area, as Bill witnessed the other day, um, you know, we won't touch a thing until we have everything figured out. It is what it is, and we installed steel fence in Shawwato.
Yeah.
To protect any recess from any runoff, but there wouldn't be, everything's uphill to it. So, we, that's just an old pattern until we... Number six. This has to do with, uh, the retail yard that we have, uh, located closest to northeast Main. Uh, this is not so much in the pit as it is more along the entrance way, but, um, regardless, like, uh, it was discussed a few years ago, a couple years ago.
Yes.
Yeah, we, it was put there in the end, at the end of two thousand seventeen.
Somewhere like, somewhere about that.
End of two thousand sixteen, and we opened two thousand seventeen up there. You know, at the time, we, we viewed it as really nothing different than what we've normally done, just keeping, you know, small contractors and homeowners out of harm's way.
Yeah.
You know, loading them up top instead of loading them down bottom. You know, since we've had discussions with Phil, we realized that, you know, it probably goes beyond that, and that we may have to take the next step with site plan review as far as that's concerned, and we, we're going to, you know, once we get this stuff figured out, that's gonna be what we...
Because even the people outside the pit, I mean, that might even, like, even me, sure, when a lot of people...
That all coincides with you.
Right, and we have signs to that, like, you know, you know, up front, it's McIntyre's, and then right after the last entrance to it is a sign that says, it's, you know, the pit, no unauthorized vehicles beyond this point.
That's all gonna coincide with which direction you want to move in.
Right.
Once, once the pit's closed.
Come back with a comprehensive plan.
Right.
Yeah, give a kind of layout of...
But you're gonna, yeah, you're gonna have to do that sooner or later, so, I mean, just...
Then we do realize that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Trying to eat the elephant in small bites, but, yeah. It's a large parcel, so...
Would you fit into a contracting business? If contractors are coming to the yard?
I don't know what...
Aren't the def, I don't have the definition.
I think we'll have to review this one.
We can review that, I mean, like, to get into a zoning...
That's what you, that's what you want, that's what you want to decide, which, which direction you want to move in is the, the direction we're...
I think we're also a storage facility, I mean, we...
Equipment storage yard?
Yes.
How many pieces of equipment do you have stored there?
No, no, um, storage.
Materials storage.
I think there's a storage facility.
Material storage.
It's contracting business and equipment storage yard.
That is, I think there's also a separate use, um, facility, storage warehouse, distribution storage facility, I think that's a lot of violas.
You have a building there that you store things in?
We don't have any buildings on the site.
Oh, okay.
But I don't think that that's really what's... That's the only, uh, structure that offers. And I don't think that that's necessarily...
I'll bring this site.
Douglas, fifty acres, seventeen in Oxbridge. Our entrance is in Oxbridge.
Gotcha.
The main pit is almost tall in Douglas, we have border to the east by the town, to the north by the town, and to the west in Douglas portion by the box.
That would be allowed also, home and warehouse.
Any other questions?
No, no, I appreciate their taking the time to address this.
We haven't seen you in a while, though, yeah, it's been a while since we...
Yeah, when you come in and find, you know, finish it all up, just whatever you're gonna fall under, or how you're gonna fall under, just have it all laid out and...
Yeah.
And then the material out front, I mean, that's what people do nowadays, they have the, the blocks all set up with your different materials, and the guy on the little pickup truck just pulls up in the front, whatever, and...
Just get the bond issue straightened out as soon as you can.
Yeah.
I can follow up with attorney talent in person.
Like I said, we haven't seen you for a while.
I know they've been going backwards.
Me and I haven't had discussions last-
Meeting, going in the right direction, that's a good tip.
Yeah, that and the ASBIL, because it's been a while, you know, the ASBIL.
Hopefully, we'll have that in December and we're in a position-
And even, Phil, if you think, if there, I know there's one Goodwell, but if one other spot, one maybe, just as a, you know, we got one, but have one as a comparison. So that way there, if you're all the same level, say here and well over there, then you kind of know the water's staying in one spot.
I don't disagree with that.
So throw yourself a good spot to grab yourself another one.
Get the groundwater profile, as I say.
Yeah, that way there, we know that the water's staying all up one area, and you're pretty good.
You got it.
No, it protects you, that way there, you think that you're safe, and you start digging, all of a sudden, you're three feet from water, now what are you gonna do?
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, you guys aren't digging anymore.
We're not digging.
No, but I'm just saying.
In the future, if we come down-
Yeah, something comes up, yeah.
But, you know, I think the ASBIL will help you, you know, basically, you know, when you look to ask for, you know, reduction, like, do the site and stuff like that. Be better idea what the site is today.
I think the ASBIL can be very helpful as we continue to address this.
Yeah.
We try to use-
Okay, thank you for coming in.
Yep, thanks, yeah, thanks, guys.
So we'll schedule again once we submit the-
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Guys, have a good one.
Okay. Request for a one-year earth removal permit extension behind Sandstone Stone, 439 Northeast Main Street.
So the last time we met, we had a question on whether or not this warranted a public hearing or not. And in the packet attached to this is my email response from Jay.
What does the extension say on it? The one that has to be recorded, what's that method? What does it say, like, on the top?
It says earth removal permit, special permit.
Special permit, and it doesn't say extension?
No.
Okay.
And it has a duration of one year.
Okay, so it's the same exact thing as the original one?
Correct.
Any response back on that?
Yeah, it's right up here.
Oh, that's right.
It's like it's like backwards.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So Phil, you say you didn't see the extension recorded, is the applicant-
They've since reported it and provided a copy of this.
Yeah?
Yes.
Just not that they could win you that one.
Right.
Jay's saying more or less, most reasonable and most transparent to consider this as quite a long process.
So this is fifteen days ago you sent him that letter. Have they provided the ASBIL?
Jim's here.
No. Everybody read it?
Yeah.
Okay, Phil, do you think, do you have any?
Well, I'd say let's ask Jim if he wants to address the board.
Thank you.
So.
Tracy, gentlemen?
Hello.
Tracy and gentlemen.
Thank you. Finally, you're a special man.
Tracy, gentlemen, and- I don't have to go to a restaurant with my wife and have the waiter or waitress say, "You guys."
Thank you.
So I've requested a one-year extension for the earth removal permit from the Sleepy Hollow project. Sent a letter into that effect, and the response was that last year's extension never got recorded, so we took care of that, I guess, just in the nick of time. The only other request was for an ASBIL. In my files, we've never done an ASBIL during the life of a permit, until it's completed. So I'm not prepared to do an ASBIL at Sleepy Hollow at this time. Probably eighty-five or ninety percent done with exploring some options right at the cul-de-sac, and that's why there's been no activity in there. We hope to have some options there within the next six, eight weeks.
Want to do a complete completion?
It's really gonna depend on how many of these options we can, we're gonna go ahead and finish the path that we can finish between now and the spring, I think. The cul-de-sac is a real challenge because of the elevation difference, and I got a meeting at the end of this week with some of the neighbors to see if they would be willing to compromise on it. Not that July provides that even if they send a letter, that problem goes away, but it helps. So was the design unattainable? Is that why you're having difficulty, or? No, just, I'll wait. I think what we'll end up coming in with, if I understand it, is modifications to the approved subdivision plan.
Sure. I don't have a problem with that.
The permit includes restoration time? Like, is-
That's right.
Like, in three days, it's supposed to be all restored?
We would need to pull the bond in order to restore the site before the permit expires.
In three days?
Correct.
So isn't that, is that in the town's best interest to do that? We've never done that before, right?
We have not done that.
So if this expires, what are the consequences?
That's a good question. I don't have an answer for you.
So we either, he's gonna be able to file, but he's already gonna be expired by the next meeting, and it probably won't get approved, the modifications, by the next meeting, it's one of those two meetings, so we should really pull his bond if we don't grant this extension.
Right, we gotta grant you. So I'm more for granting the extension and pulling the bond. Pulling a bond is-
I'm just saying technically, speaking, I'm not saying that we would actually do that, but I'm saying-
Because the life of the bond goes with the permit, okay? So it expires with the permit.
But it's renewed today. It's been renewed for a year.
So, so-
No, 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 no.
Yeah, Jim has extended one year.
For a new, well-
It's been extended till 2020, the bond, bond part is what I'm talking about.
Oh, the bond, sorry. I'm trying to say, the bond.
So he has a bond, he's gonna have an expired permit. What, what's the mechanism for enforcement or?
I would talk to town council and get direction from them.
With love of the hour.
We brought this up at the last meeting.
Yeah, and town council said to have them file, but technically, that doesn't even make a difference at this point, because we should, the town should pull the bond because they have an expired permit.
Tracy, about a year ago, there was one of the permits on the De Vries property came to an end. That permit is probably eight years old and it's been extended, okay? That time, a year ago, Bill sent it to town council, it was prone to do. The response was, there is no provision for this board to extend a permit. I opened your earth removal bylaw and read the sentence that you have the authority to extend a permit, and not just for a year, for whatever time you so desire.
Was that in our bylaw?
No.
No?
I don't know what, it absolutely is here.
Okay.
Can we grab that section from this one?
I mean, a year ago, you granted this same extension.
Yeah, you know, yeah.
At least, at least ten of them in my twenty-one years here.
No, no, I think we have granted other earth removals.
Has this board been asked to grant extensions within a week of expiring?
Before, before the expiration.
It comes up that close normally, and they don't have the full site in general.
Well, he did.
I'm not saying you, anybody.
He did request it at the last meeting.
Correct.
It shouldn't have, but it does.
So it came in before, when you were gone.
Couple of weeks.
You think we should be tracking it?
No, I'm just asking because I'm not, this is a weakness of my knowledge, I'm not a knowledge-
Yeah, it was about a month, a month before was the request.
People usually commit, yeah.
Well, less than a month.
What is normal, what do people, what if, when they're asking for an extension on a project this side, is there a normal, like, they know a couple of months ahead?
A lot of times, sometimes it's after the fact, it's like, oh, forgot about it.
Not filing to the registry, too.
Conservation is-
It's in violation, but we just-
Just like the last one, never got filed till last week.
I'm just asking a proper-
Yeah, no, yeah.
For conservation, if you do not request an extension before it's expired, you can't do it afterward. So it's much stricter because it's-
It's a refile, right?
It's what was protected.
What was?
Right. Could be refiled, I mean, I'd most of the time, at that point, it's expired.
Yeah, so it'd be expired, like a partial certificate, work hasn't been completed.
What is the rationale for not granting it?
Not granting what?
Other than the extension.
Then it's expired.
Town council is saying, most reasonable and most transparent to consider this a substantive amendment that requires a formal proceeding with full notice and publication.
Even though it's been done a gazillion times without that.
It's the same site.
Correct.
That's substantial.
It's up to us.
Yeah, substantial.
I just want Bill to read the section that allows the-
Thirty more acres.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't on the initial plan.
The leeway from the board to do that.
If I could find it, I'm reading. But Jim knows where it is. You saw, you said you saw that.
Well, he doesn't know exactly where it is.
He said it's in there.
Yeah, but he said, someone told him it's in there.
He could've given us a reference on the section.
Here, it's in there. But if I come to a meeting and I said, "I saw, it's in there," then they'd say, "Okay, show it to me."
He didn't know the person was gonna be ass.
Well, you don't come as a bluff and just say it.
No, no, no. That's all.
I think we need a gavel.
Yeah.
Where is that gavel?
Yeah, well, it's in Marie's office.
I have a little troubling idea that you have to have a public hearing over a simple extension.
Correct.
It's a simple issue.
Well, and the-
And it's always been treated as a simple issue.
But the problem is, we've done other extensions.
Yeah.
And we haven't had a public hearing for another extension when someone's asked, so.
Right, well, we should probably grant it, I mean, it's not like it's any, we know Jim's history, and I, I'll call you Jim now, you would not be here that long.
No, I just, I, but I also think-
There's a question raised at the last meeting, so we want to make sure it's legitimately-
Correct.
Right, clearly I wasn't here.
Yeah.
Already, clearly you were not here, right? Nor was I.
No.
Because you're tan?
It's been made a point of that.
Clearly it's been.
Maybe I didn't go anywhere.
Because you're tan?
I could've been on this bus.
Where were you?
Jersey.
Jersey.
That's the paragraph. What's her name, I'll see, what's her name? Oh, that show, Jersey Shore. What is it?
Snooky?
Snooky.
Has it?
What show is that?
Jersey Shore?
Oh, I've never watched Jersey.
You would never see, that's a whole like gun to my head.
No, 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 no.
I mean, do you have grass planted everywhere down there, Jim, now?
In the entrance?
All that.
Yeah, in the entrance, and some of the side slopes have enough.
Right, so we have 618, which says, "No permit shall be issued for an initial period of more than three years. The board may, in its discretion, grant a further permit for each additional year beyond the initial period, but no such permit shall be issued unless the applicant has conformed to all the requirements of the permit." So-
We are allowed to grant it.
All right, all right.
Yeah, if it was initial three years, then we couldn't grant an extension beyond the three years.
So it's two, he's on year two.
Okay, so you're on, yeah, so you're on the third one.
You just completed year two.
So you got another year.
Yeah.
So you're allowed, this is the last extension.
Do it. Yep, one more year.
All right, if that's the case, and I'll make a motion to request a one-year extension.
Request?
From what date we want to go to?
October, what year is the date?
Eleven.
We're gonna go to this date?
October eleventh, 2019.
You can do it on this, you can do it tonight's date.
October eleventh.
Twenty twenty?
Two thousand and twenty.
So we're gonna go to October eleventh, 2020, for the 439 Northeast Main Street?
Second.
Mike C., seconded by Aaron, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both abstained?
Now, with regard to the ASBIL plan, the site's been sitting pretty much in a dormant state for at least a year.
Yeah.
Okay, I know there was some activity out there today. And normally, we do get an ASBIL at the end of a permit term, okay? And it's in the conditions of the decision.
That's true, you're right, yeah, you're right, yeah.
So with regard to where they're at is what my concern is, I want to make sure that they're at the grades that they're supposed to be, and getting an ASBIL at the end of the permit is, it's a condition of the permit.
Yeah. Is he, so he's at-
Jim? You mean ASBIL to at the end of the extension?
I, because my days are over for earth removal permits, and I said, Andy, I don't wanna, I don't wanna wage a war that's gonna affect you. I would, I would plead with the board if I was gonna be around for a while, to not require an ASBIL, as you think of it, that's an unnecessary expense. And, okay, this is transitioning into a subdivision, but all the other ones we've done, it was a hill and now it's a flat thing, and when the grass is grown, Bill or someone comes out and says it's done. But ASBILs done by surveyors are expensive, and it's an unnecessary expense.
You want one done by the time this permit runs out?
Maybe you could give her one at the end of this one.
At the end of this extension.
The concern is, you know, I don't know where they're at, technically, with regard to their current permit limits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's been no activity for at least a year.
Yeah, I would say a year, because I've-
Well, it's been a year.
I don't know, have you dragged down there in the summer?
Yeah.
Is there activity during the summer down there?
Earth removal?
No, not earth removal, just trucks and stuff like that.
No, I'm talking earth removal.
No, there hasn't been any earth removal.
I think if it's in the decision, then it has to be followed through. So I would double check the decision, and then talk with Bill, and maybe Bill can give us an update.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I didn't memorize that. I know it says, "From time to time, the board can request at the board's discretion," and an ASBIL. I don't know if the period, the time period of the permit, if it's, if that's what it says.
But I know we didn't do one a year ago.
No.
On the current permit.
No, I know you didn't do one a year ago, but it's a year later and everything else, and have a review of what's in our decision and let us know and-
I don't object to that, I think that's-
And then that we're there, then we can hear what was in that, and then we'll say, either, yeah, we're gonna need it, or we might say-
Finish it up and then give it to us.
And give it. So, we're now we're there with it, Jim, all right?
Let Andy know that, if he's the one running it now, Jim, so he can get the date on it, because, yeah, I mean, you're out of it now and he's in it. That's, that's part of the reason we need to keep up with it, because it's not you anymore, it's somebody else now.
Right.
And that's, that's a big, that's a big change.
And to get this one down into the, get this one registered, not a year later.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Well, ready?
Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm leaving the room for one minute, and I'll be right back.
Okay, sure.
Yep.
All right.
Do you want to look at the main minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we do the minutes? Come on, Mike. He's the man.
He uses two minutes for so many boards.
He's good. You find that little stuff. I'll read it and then I'll-
It's only a minute and a minute.
It's an engineer thing.
Yeah.
It's a minute and a minute. September tenth?
Oh, you have a, you have a second?
Oh, you have a, you have a second? September second?
You weren't there.
No.
Nine ten, yeah, let's do that one.
All right, I have what might be an issue, but.
Do we need Bill's? Do you highlight?
No, he's gonna have to.
No, just so.
Recorder will get it.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Page, page two. Third paragraph starts off Scott Duncan. The third sentence, it says that the envelope business closes down at ten thirty P M. You get down to the next paragraph, one, two, three, four, five. The fifth sentence says the envelope company operates twenty-four seven. There might be two different people talking about.
Yeah, I do remember there would.
Multiple businesses in there.
The neighbor was saying it closed at one point, but then the people from the mill were saying it's a twenty-four hour business.
So what is, what is the proper?
It is a twenty-four.
Seven.
Business.
Are our people in there working?
It's always been that way.
And it can't be that.
Whoever said it was shut down at ten thirty is.
Yeah.
Did the applicant?
It might have.
No, it was the neighbor.
Neighbor.
The neighbor said that?
Yeah, neighbor, I think it was. Somebody from.
Twenty-four seven operation.
Yeah, but Scott Duncan, the one oh six Gilboa, said it closes around ten thirty.
That's, that's the.
And then the other person said twenty-four seven.
Which, which is.
Two shifts, I thought it was.
Which was, which was the people who are running the mill operation for the envelope company.
Not the applicant, not the applicant.
Not the neighbor.
Right.
The point is, it's not a contradiction per se, it's just two different people speaking. Okay, so I guess it's okay.
Oh, yeah, that, that was the gentleman in the audience replied that the operation is three shifts.
Yeah.
So that would be the twenty-four seven.
The envelope company is three shifts, but the other building is only gonna be open ten thirty.
You have anything else?
Yes.
But the equipment for that upstairs will be running twenty-four seven.
Correct, that's what they're saying.
Yeah, so that's okay. But the other thing I've, it looks strange here, down at the bottom of the page, third sentence from the bottom, page two. Third sentence says, test it, it is. What?
Test it is properly contacted.
So I think that it in there.
Yeah, delete it.
Needs to go. Okay? Other than that, that's all I have.
Um, on the, is that the September tenth one?
Yeah.
So the September tenth one, we also stated about solar regs, uh, the boards, and start working on that regs. Board agreed that we'd be looking at the regs. And I'll go with, for an example.
In your packet is.
Sutton.
Sutton.
Yeah.
Do you got Sutton in Webster now?
Sutton's in there.
How come it's not on our agenda? As a discussion item.
You were agendas.
So, no, but initially, on, on the first revision of the.
Oh.
Agenda, it was in the discussion as number item five. And now we're in the third revision.
Maybe the chair moved it to T V D.
Are we moving things?
Yeah.
Maybe.
That's where it's called a drive.
That's why it's called the chair.
Just saying, I was just.
So there's no, I don't understand why your point was.
Um, he wants to look at the solar regs, just to keep that at the forefront of our brains. And we do have, um, a copy of Sutton's regs in the packet.
Yeah, so the minutes are okay.
Yes, the minutes are okay. He was just adding two seconds.
Good night, let's go.
Okay, twenty-fourth.
Do you wanna take, wanna hold twenty-fourth?
Do them both together.
Let's do them separately, because they're.
Separately, because some people are absent.
Alex, let's, yeah, let's, let's finish up that one, then we'll go on with our agenda.
We're done, we're done with September tenth, unless somebody else.
No, we're good.
We'll make a motion to accept September tenth, uh, minutes as revised.
Second.
Made by Les, seconded by Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstained, motion carries. So we're going back on to our agenda.
Oh, you don't wanna get this one done?
There's another day of minutes.
Yeah, we're doing.
Yeah, we'll go back there.
We'll do them after.
We have an agenda.
Followed, as the discussion.
We took that one.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, next item on the agenda. White Heights Flexible Developmenter Special Permit.
There you go.
Is he here? Yep, special permit number four.
Or the last, number three. Yes, ready and.
Ready to go?
Sure are. Hopefully, this is the last time we're here for the special permit.
Probably, yeah.
Couple months anyways. Do you want me to begin? I think, so we are here, last meeting, the release was voted on to substitute lots two and three for lot one and two. That was held pending submission of an update as to where we're at on the special permit. That was submitted. We have contacted the person who's going to help us with the affordable units. They have actually updated me and said that they're going to accept the application once the building permits are issued. At that point, as long as we have a plan in place for the construction of the two buildings, they'd be able to, to work that in. I don't know if that's a change, I, I've never done this candidly, so I don't know if that's a change from the two thousand eighteen rules and regs that I was originally dealing with to what the rules are now. But we've engaged someone that's willing to accept them, so that's good. The five thousand dollar donation for lot, lot two, or begins at lot two, is ready once the building permit is issued. I believe that those were the two issues that you had concerns with last meeting, as to where we were at, and putting them into written format. But I did go through and itemize all of the conditions on the letter. If you want, I can read them to you.
We're releasing on lot two and three.
The A B C is over, right? I believe as of this evening. Okay, so I did request the D E P's process on dealing with A B C. Do we get a copy of that?
I think I emailed that out a long time ago, but no, I didn't.
Okay, I'll check on my phone.
Well, just before, I mean, let's hear from Bill, make sure the A B C is over and done.
Well, wait, I don't know about that. I just want it for my reference. I'll, I'll look on my phone if I have it in my email.
Soon, no?
Yeah, I sent it out a long time ago. That was early on when it first came out.
It was August, I think it was in August seventeenth. Oh, the last meeting. I was, I was just going through. Okay. It was emailed to both of us, to all of us?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I emailed the board the photos the first time, and it was in, in that link. I watched your video, but I wasn't sure why they were showing it. Sorry. I was showing you the current state of the site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ready, should be, Bill's on.
Right.
That wasn't the one with me and Jake did, right?
No.
Okay.
So, um, there's two things, I think, going on, okay? First is the question on the A B C material, and then the second is, you know, the status of the milestones in the permit that Jen had distributed the letter, right? So with regard to the A B C materials, the northern end of the site, Jake and Les and I witnessed two test pits that were dug, and we're satisfied that that area is, basically, has removed all the material.
Okay.
To the southwest corner of the cul-de-sac, there was a trench that was excavated that was roughly a hundred feet long by ten feet wide by ten feet deep.
Yeah.
Generally. When they excavated that, they stockpiled the material adjacent to the trench. We had discussions about that. And originally, they were gonna backfill with that native soil, and as they were gonna do that, we were gonna observe whether or not there was A B C material in the stockpile, and that would have been, been removed. They did go through and remove the superficial A B C material. I agree with that. They then offered an alternative approach and wanted to truck in structural fill. And they backfilled the trench excavation to grade today with that structural fill. Okay? When we talked about that, they were going to take all of the excavated piles and haul that off-site to pine, and I was okay with that. Today, they offered, or yesterday, maybe, I don't know, offered a different approach where they were gonna leave the excavated stockpile that they took out of the hole, adjacent to the trench, to be spread at a future date, you know, undefined. So in other words, we don't have the luxury of seeing what's in the stockpiled material.
But it's stockpiled material anyways, right?
That's, that's stockpile from where they buried.
Well, wait, where's the trench that you, you know, let's, let's not get carried away, but you said southwest, so.
I'm not carried away.
No, 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 but you said southwest, and now we're up in northwest, or north.
No, no, north is up here.
Which way? So you're going the opposite way, then?
The end of.
Do we need a compass to go over there? Because I'm pretty sure that the lake is north, so.
No, this is east of the lake.
Okay, so, I mean, what's the point? No, 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 just the location, the location. I know where the test pits were, that's why I was just saying.
See?
I searched all the methods, and I asked for it the last weekend. We can, it's probably reflected in that.
Test pits here.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So where's this trench you're talking about?
The trench that they, that we saw was right there.
Okay, that was, that was already open.
Yeah, that was already open. I didn't get to, I didn't see the excavation of that trench. They did it on a Saturday. I didn't see it.
All right, so they, but they removed the material that was out of there.
They stockpiled it adjacent to the trench.
They're not still working on that lot, though, yet, so they're working their way down to that area.
What he's saying is he doesn't know what's in the pile.
That's what I'm saying, thank you.
It's still a stockpile.
No, you don't, you don't know what's in the pile, and plus, you didn't do any test pits on, on the other side?
No.
Why weren't any test pits done on the other side?
You need to.
The board said they wanted two test pits.
And he didn't need to. Ernie, if you, if you're familiar with the site, he did them in the cul-de-sac where, where a majority of the debris was, when we.
No, the debris was across the whole cul-de-sac.
It wasn't across the whole cul-de-sac, because it wasn't over here?
Yes, it was.
He was there, he saw that.
I was, I was watching them dump it last. They dumped across the whole area of the cul-de-sac.
Was it in this back corner? Was it in this corner?
That's the detention pond.
Correct, so it wasn't in, again, that's in the cul-de-sac, too. The detention pond is in the cul-de-sac, so it was from the detention pond over.
Here's your cul-de-sac.
Whoa, whoa.
Oh, why are you drawing on the table?
Here's your cul-de-sac. There was debris dumped all the way around that cul-de-sac.
Stopping at the detention pond?
First picture that we saw.
Well, I'm not sure exactly where the detention pond is. I'm telling you, there was debris dumped all the way along that, that whole cul-de-sac. So if you dug test pits over here, you're gonna have to do test, you're gonna have to do test pits to make sure that all that debris was removed.
So we.
Otherwise, we can turn it back to the D E P and let them handle it.
No, no, we, we said two test pits on our lot.
Two's not enough. All right, I'm, I'm gonna say that's what the board wanted, but I'm telling you, you haven't tested any place on that other side where debris was dumped, so you need more test pits.
We, we spread it out. We did the, those two test pits, right, where, where the test pits were dug.
The test pits were done on the northern slope, okay? I'm satisfied with the northern slope.
Yeah, that's fine. Be satisfied with the northern slope, that's fine.
That's it, that's what we're talking about.
What's that?
That's what we're talking about. Did he satisfy where the pits were dug?
Right.
And then he satisfied with the northern?
With the northern slope. I'm concerned about the stockpile of excavated soil.
Now you got a whole nother slope it hasn't tested.
On the southwestern side. I can't believe we're here on this.
First of all, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have limited Bill to two test pits. He should be able to dig as many test pits as he wants to make sure where the debris is gone.
Did you give him the number?
I did not.
We said, how many test pits do you want to do, Bill?
No, I would not have limited myself to two. But regardless.
He wants to see at least two test pits at the northern edge of the pit and, of the pit at the end of the cul-de-sac prior to the final visit. That's the notes from the last meeting, which you weren't here.
Yes.
He said, if he said three, I mean, we would've said, okay.
Well, he said at least two.
But he meant five. Please, Eric. No, 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 what I'm saying is that I would think you would want to not be. I would not be.
Correct.
Correct.
Right. All of this, all of these.
I still didn't find the regulations when you have a violation for A B C. I have found the, um, processing, the using or processing of A B C, but I haven't seen, and I don't have any, you know, that I can locate. I just wanna know what D E P would require. Is that what we're doing?
Right.
That's all I wanna know.
Right. So this is the map, Aaron, I mean, you guys.
Right, a little bit of the street.
So, so lots, lots two and three, all right, the stockpile that Bill's referring to is on five and six.
Yeah.
So they're not even close to the lots that they.
It doesn't matter, the idea is, is the stuff is still there. So, could be there.
So the point I'll take, and what would D E P require, what else, Ernie, what you were saying, what would D E P require?
I'm sure. D E P would require it to be moved.
Last meeting, but I don't know.
If they're allowed, it can be processed on-site and, and used, but. We don't know if it's all gone yet, because you didn't do any test pits on the other side to see if it's still there.
Maybe we weren't able to handle it. Should've just gone first time to D E P or something.
The A B C stuff we're talking?
Yeah.
Yeah. But we said it had to be, couldn't be, I mean, nothing could be done on-site, you had to ship it off.
Right, has to go to one of.
So, so between Friday and Monday, I, I met with Dave Sputner, Bob's partner, in the field on Friday. We came up with a game plan for the trench area. He knew I wanted to observe the backfilling of excavated soils into the trench to see if there was buried material in that pile.
Which is understandable.
That was the agreement on Friday, this past Friday. Then later Friday, I get an email from, I forget if it was Dave or Bob, that they're gonna bring in material, backfill the trench, and then haul the stockpiled soils out. I was okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay? And then either last night or this morning, I can't remember to be frank with you. That changed again to, we'll backfill the trench, and we're gonna leave the stockpiled soil there.
Well, why didn't it just get rid of the stockpile material? If they were gonna backfill the trench with clean material? I mean, it just.
Can I answer that?
Please.
Because it's probably four to five hundred yards of good.
We wanna recognize.
Yeah, go ahead.
It, it's good fill. I mean, we pulled that all back, but what we did is, when we were with the board members on the Friday, we dug two. Before that, we pulled the whole thing back, because we wanted Bill to see what was in there, which was nothing. And I didn't put it back, because now you've got some rock, and I can't do a twelve-inch lift with, with rock. I just can't.
I, I'm, may I? Be honest with you, I'm not even sure why you dug that trench, because that wasn't even in an area where the debris was dumped. The debris was dumped over the cul-de-sac. It didn't even get to where you dug the trench, so I'm not even sure why you dug the trench to begin with. What I'm concerned about is where I, what I witnessed and what I saw being dumped was all along that whole area of that cul-de-sac.
It's gone.
We dug it out, sir.
Without, without digging a couple of test pits to, on that side, as well as this side.
Ernie, we just did that with the board, and then we pulled it all back, because he didn't like the roots in it, so all of it's gone, three feet deep. It's all pulled back, and it's nothing in it.
The board asked for the roots to be done.
I'm sorry, Bill?
The board requested that the organics be pulled out.
Yes, because there was, there was about, about two to three feet of weaver and, and stuff like that.
But at this point, you're saying that the trench has been backfilled with new material.
Brand new material.
Brand-new material.
But now the material...
It's pulled off and most of it's hauled up.
Hold on. I just wanna understand where Ernie's coming. So that, and you said that that pile of stuff is still there?
Yes.
Now, that was the stuff that's in question still.
Correct.
Why don't you just get rid of that stuff? I just want... I'd like an answer on that.
May I answer that?
Please.
So... On the left-hand side, I don't know, it's east-west, north-south, whatever, the left-hand side of the cul-de-sac.
Southwest.
Okay, southwest, okay. What we did was, okay, there was a question, what was in there? Okay, a trench was dug and we left it open. Okay, you could see a good cross-section of the entire... Of the entire, okay, slope. Okay, rather, so... And it occurred to me, okay, on Friday, okay, why are we putting questionable material back in to this... Let's call it a trench, okay? And, and, and let's put some structural fill back in because that is in the right way. I didn't wanna get there Monday, okay, and have anybody say, you know, "That's, that's not acceptable." So, at $5,000, okay, we brought in material, okay, and dumped it in, compacted it in lifts. Okay, if you went out there, you'd say, "Oh, wow." Okay, so if, if you're thinking about when you're excavating this trench, okay, you're taking it out here and you're piling it here. So, the, the material that the cross-section that you could see clearly, okay, had no materials in it, okay, is what's piled, okay, to the left. To the left of the trench, okay? So, what ends up happening is, you have your road, you had five feet of original material when it was built. Okay, we filled in the entire trench with structural fill, which you have this slips for here, okay, we just come. And, and then, where they piled up, it's basically right there. It's beyond that. It's on the lot. It's 40 feet on the lot, 30 feet on the lot. So if somebody wanted to see that at some point, okay, they can see that very clearly, okay? Okay, you know, but Laurie is right. It's, it's, okay, the fill is, is clean, okay? Okay, it's got rocks in it like any other fill does, okay, but, but, just so you want... I don't know if you can picture it, but you have a road.
I can picture it.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
And then that's just feathered in there.
Yeah. What I'm saying is you dug a trench. You stockpiled the material from the trench on the side. But there was never any ABCs dumped where you dug the trench. The only place... You're down below where the ABCs were dumped. The ABCs were dumped along the back of the cul-de-sac.
Ernie, there was because they were pulling over the last, at the end of last week when they were loading up the truck. ABC from the top of that stockpile.
Right, yes.
So if it's on the top, my point is, it's likely mixed in too.
So are you suggesting that that should be just removed off the site?
No, it's up to them how they wanna do it, but my question is, is there, is there ABC under that pile?
Well, how many ballpark cubic yards in that pile?
Probably 400.
200?
No.
400?
Four to five.
What size excavators got up there?
335?
335? Doesn't take long to move it around, will it? Correct, to get a little peak. Set up a date, go down there, dig it out. Bill, you decide how far. You say, "Okay, dirt's yours, do what you want."
I have no problem with that.
Bill says, "Is ABC's in it?" Dirt goes. Simple.
We were there today.
Well, I'm just saying, that's gonna resolve this whole deal. That way, right there, right? Think of 335, just hammer it out.
Unfortunately, if I can say something.
Please.
It was, it was clear as day. You were told not to do anything trench work, digging out unless Bill was there during the meeting. That trench was dug with Bill, Bill being there. It was not witnessed what was put, you know, if there was anything put on, if there was good material put on bad material, we don't know. He should've been there. He wasn't there.
I'm very certain the trench was dug before you had said you wanted to be on-site for all of the work.
Yeah, that was done.
Well, beyond that, I've been asking Bob religiously for, you know, the communication, as you know. And I needed documentation. If he was gonna dig a big trench that needed to be observed, I would've wanted to see that.
I'm gonna throw Laurie under the bus on that one, okay, because that happened on a Saturday and I didn't even know about it.
It doesn't matter who's under the bus.
Did DEP receive the information?
Yes.
And they've signed off on it?
No, they've been copied on all of the communication, but I believe they've given the reins to...
They can't sign off on it until they sign on.
Okay, so where is the information that says what's required when this happens from DEP? The DEP requires?
The steps, the visual.
There are no steps that I found that this firm is...
And it varies by violation to violation is what they do.
So where the... So it must be in regulations where it says what you're supposed to do.
That's why you can't...
Guideline?
They have a guidance document.
And they also have a 30-day permit for crushing on-site, right? Do you file with them? I just saw the...
The DEP said they do not allow crushing on-site. And that's in the guidance, that's in the guidance document.
Oh, I just saw a permit that was issued for 30 days for crushing on-site.
Yeah, sifting it around while Bill's there, is that alright with you?
That's, that's what I... I think that's completely...
It should take half an hour.
Half an hour. If you have an offer and you're not on the...
Oh yeah, I'm gonna relax the lots. Laurie, are we holding the lots?
I'm not the chair, but, at all. But, do you understand what you're saying about, I mean, you, your family's been in the business for 100 years, 335 machine. Can it be set up a time where he's there and sees it?
We've been there. We were just there.
No, I don't care. You could be there 100 times, but there when Bill's there.
How many times are we gonna do it?
When Bill's there.
He's been there. We were just there with the board and they asked for certain test pits. We did it.
Alright, and you know what Bill's concerned with?
And that's what Ernie says, too.
I would really like to sign off on your permits for you tonight, but I'm not going to vote to do that until I know that this area is... No, you know, you haven't followed any of the protocol we're asking you to do. You could've had this cleaned up in four days if you go down here and do it the right way.
I agree.
Now, if you wanna set it up, you can set it up. We could down with Bill tomorrow, you dig in the squats that haven't been dug in and make sure there's no material there. And Bill comes back and gives you a clean spill of health, then we will okay the permits at the next meeting. You, you haven't satisfied what the board has asked you to do.
I asked the board the last meeting, okay, respectfully, Ernie, okay?
And I agree with you said.
Yeah, absolutely.
So when we were out there, if, I'm gonna tell you what. When we were out there, we did the test pits, we were satisfied with what we saw. But what we didn't see was is under that pile. That's all we just need to see to make sure this is up and up.
And it's not a witch hunt.
In all... Well, well, that's...
It's a witch hunt, you're saying?
No, 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 I'm not saying that, okay?
We didn't bring the material in.
That's a standpoint.
Keep it, keep it to me.
What I'm asking you, even the last meeting, okay, my exact words were, "Can we not keep leaving the goalposts?" Okay? And those are my exact words. Are we talking about the pile? And I wanna be clear to this. Do you have a, does anybody have a picture of what was...
For what kind of videos?
Uh, I might.
There's a compacted layer of gravel that you can distinctly see because it's, because it's gravel, it's processed gravel material. Okay, behind that is the, is the, is the pile and the question that you're talking about.
Or we can make it continue.
Right behind that.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm telling you, that's 30 feet off of the roadway, okay? That pile's about 10 feet wide, okay, and, you know, four to five feet deep, maybe not even five feet. That's the material that we're talking about. I just wanna be crystal clear because what I'm, what I'm asking is, I don't wanna come next week and say, "Yeah, but that wasn't exactly what we asked for."
Well, that's why you have Bill there. Bill's our man.
To be crystal clear, I want you to get together with Bill, go there and wherever he says, "Dig a hole." Dig that hole, show to him that there is no material buried there anymore, and move on to the next hole. And when he comes back and says, "I'm satisfied that there's no other material there," then we can move forward.
Right, and we're back here in two weeks. Do we have another meeting?
There are areas that you haven't dug in that Bill didn't do test holes in, you didn't do test holes in that was material dumped there, and I don't, we don't know if it's still there or not.
At the end of the cul-de-sac, where we dug the, where we dug the test pits, okay, that, where, where, where you were questioning. We dug one right in the middle to the right side and right to the middle of the left side. There wasn't 15 feet of...
I was happy with those.
Yeah.
Wasn't 15 feet of pile. So that whole end of the cul-de-sac, Ernie, just so you know.
Then you don't have to dig another hole there. Go to the other side now.
And that, and there we had an entire trench, so you had the whole thing open.
But the material from the trench was put on a spot we didn't see.
Okay, all I'm asking is, beyond the gravel is where the, where the trench material went. They casted it from here to here.
So, we will just remove the pile off-site, okay? How, when can that be done?
I don't know. I gotta, I gotta get trucks out.
But make sure that Bill knows and Bill is there visually.
I think that our communication is...
And if they don't get together, don't do it without him there.
But, but, to your point, if it's good material and you dig it, you can say, "Hey, it's good material."
Why remove? No problem with that. Why remove it?
I'm gonna say one thing. You weren't about moving. They have a 335. Just dig some holes in it.
I understand, sir, but you don't understand. You gotta truck it off-site, too.
No, we're not saying that.
You're just saying do a cross section.
You're sifting, you're sifting through it with Bill there. And it's good materials?
No, I'm just, this is ridiculous. This is fairly routine in the industry to do test holes. To get this kind of discussion is frankly ridiculous.
Eminem, I'm about to end it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what I recommend. I'm gonna recommend that you get together with Bill, you go out and you do all the tests that he wants you to do, digging pits. And when he comes back and tells us that he's satisfied that there's no material left there, then we can move on.
I feel like I'm going to stand. It's not like we're not communicating.
Hasn't that been done?
That has not been done.
So the test pits that were dug?
There were two test holes at the end of the cul-de-sac. There are no testing and no witnessing of the stockpile that's on-site.
So it's just the stockpile?
I'm not gonna limit it, you know.
Wanna file with DEP? That could be.
So, so...
That's another option.
Yeah, file with DEP, then we go that way.
We already did do that, sir, and they remanded it back to Bill because of the...
I was working with them to try and expedite the process, okay? And frankly, this, you're correct. Four days, I think, is generous. I think it could've been done in two.
I agree.
This is not a tug-of-war between a board and you guys. You guys gotta do it, you either do it the way that, look at Ernie's, everybody's blood pressure's getting up. And it's you guys that brought that material there to start with. Night after night, and you know what? Thank God it wasn't here two weeks ago. But I'm just saying that it's getting, it's hiring.
Just through, Ernie, just for the record as well, the two test pits were dug on lot seven. Right, Bill, did you agree?
Yes.
Lot seven, okay. The, the area in question, which was an open, when I was out there with Jake and Bill, was an open trench.
And I showed you guys some evidence.
For the record, for the minutes, okay? Were, were between lot five and lot six. It was an open trench area, okay? The test pits were done on lot seven, two test pits were done on lot seven, which we discussed the top layer material, which had organics to be scraped off for the minutes. That material is new off. So, the area in question is the open trench that was there at the time when we did the site visit. That now is filled with material, right, and stockpile, some type of stockpile there between lots five and six. So that's what we said, is basically go out there, dig a hole, dig a couple of test pits with Bill out there, let him look at the material. If it's clean by his standards, then there's no reason to truck it off-site. You save the trucking fee and then now it's, the point's been addressed. Agree? So we're, we're clear. Sorry, Ernie, I just wanted to be specific related to the lots. There it is.
So testing to my satisfaction.
Testing to your satisfaction. The DEP would've said testing to their satisfaction. We took the lead on it to try to save them the time of going through all the DEP stuff. Testing to your satisfaction, you tell us it's clean, then we give them...
And I agree with what Jake said, too. They weren't supposed to do nothing unless Bill was informed and he was there to witness it.
What is the request in front of us tonight?
What's that?
To release the covenant?
Yes.
The covenant?
Yes.
We have, we have hinged on approval. We approved it last meeting pending the okay on the ABC issue.
That's not actually... It was approved pending the submission of the status of the special permit conditions.
Might have been, but I also know the ABC issue was brought up.
Yeah, because we were gonna want to take the test pits. That would've been part of it, too. I think we wanted the update on the... Things were like, no comment, no comment.
So are you in agreement with that?
You're doing the work between lots on lot five and six, right?
I'm gonna do it as Ernie suggests.
I feel like we're starting all over again now.
Not all over. One meeting with him out there in the field with you, done. Make it happen. That's it, done. The 335?
Yeah.
Yeah, who's the operator?
I mean, Boyd, you can vote any way you want.
So I just don't understand where the authority comes from to uphold the, the release.
The board?
I mean, we've complied with the...
Pending Mr. Conde's review of the decision and the letter of milestones. That was the official motion. And that was made by Mike. So, did we review the decision?
I have not, yep.
No.
We have the letter of the milestones?
And did you receive a letter of milestones?
I have, yes.
What was the review of the decision about?
To make sure it's consistent with the conditions in the decision. Nothing was omitted, in other words.
The milestones were not omitted?
There were no milestones missed.
When did you receive the milestones letter? We don't have that, okay?
I don't think so.
So you're pretty much trying to match up the decision with the milestones letter that was submitted?
Yes.
So it's Thursday?
I didn't see this. Oh wait, we haven't done this one, right?
We're not open Friday.
Yeah, three days.
Friday.
Which I was out at the site.
So, is this the amendment to the flexible development special permit? This is the decision?
There's three. There's the flexible development, there's the subdivision, and then there's the amendment to flex. And that's why it's in your packet.
We don't have the original one, though, right?
You should. You should. I had her, I asked her to copy.
Amendment. Certificate of approval. That's not...
I think it'd be done before.
We don't have the original decision, though, right? Anybody have it in their packet?
I didn't see it.
The flex decision?
Yeah, original flex decision.
I asked her to put it in there.
This is the amendment. Oh, is it stapled together?
I don't know.
Flexible development.
Oh, here we go. So are you, Bill, are you saying milestones lining up with the findings or lining up with what?
No, to see if they omitted any milestones, any obligations prior to releasing lots.
Do I have to go through them? Because I can read the, the letter that I wrote.
Yeah.
So the first one was the special permit being recorded. That was done off the...
Is that A?
A, yes.
That's 1A on the original?
Yes.
Okay.
Then there was five acres to be conveyed for the Douglas Conservation by amendment. The amendment allows for two releases prior to the conveyance. The conveyance is...
So that is under amendment number three? Release two lots prior to the conveyance? Okay.
C is confirming infrastructure will comply with the approved definitive subdivision plan, so we're...
You're not quite there yet.
Well, you have the, the plans. I mean, I think that gets submitted at the time the building permits are...
Bill, is that something you need to verify, that infrastructure within the project site should comply with an approved definitive subdivision plan?
The infrastructure meaning the piping, they provided an as-built width, which we based our bond estimate on.
So that is good, right? That's a check on that? Okay, alright.
Each dwelling unit needs to be served by two off-street parking spaces. That would be complied with. E is also on the amendment that has to do with the, the local action unit, the affordable unit. We have engaged a woman out of the regional housing services office. They're out of Newton. They have a deposit on-site. They'll accept the application when the building permits get issued. The amendment allows for two building permits prior to the submission of approval to the DHCD. No low-income units in the project will be sold. This goes into who is gonna receive and be sold, both F and G. Both, then with regards to marketing is H. I'm still not there yet either. The restrictions is I, and that's not ripe for discussion. And the regulatory agreement with the town, that we have, I believe, that's Form G, correct?
Yes.
We have that as well.
Is that signed?
It was, but we talked last meeting, it releases one and two, and you said you didn't want it to release specifically lots.
Right, so you need to revise that with the corrected information so they can sign.
I have revised it with lots three and four, and that was a, sorry, two and three.
Two and three.
And that was approved back in August by Town House.
Okay.
Yep, so we have that.
Is that signed by us or is it signed by them?
I believe it's already signed by both parties.
Okay, so that's a check and record the same at the Western Registry.
It hasn't been released yet.
That's the...
We still have.
And to be released.
There was one question.
K is no, not yet?
Uh, correct, overhyped the appearance of the units.
Did you find out anything on that?
Oh, no.
That's kinda funky.
Okay, do you want me to jump in now?
Yeah.
Okay, we, we had a brief discussion. That, that bond release form, that lot release form was not for the entire subdivision, which is atypical. Usually it's for, I'm sorry, the surety, the surety agreement only references to lots.
Not the whole project.
Not the whole project. So the surety agreement should reference the entire project, all the lots within the subdivision.
Right now, something's going on, isn't it?
Yeah.
That surety was looked at by Town House.
That surety was looked at by Town Council though, right?
Right, but can they submit a surety based on two lots?
Two and two and two and two.
He's, he's looking at it at, for form, and it met, met the form of a surety.
Oh, okay.
Normally, we have them for the whole project.
Correct, or phases.
But they could supply.
Or, or phase of the project, right?
Two at a time?
I'm just bringing it back up, because we talked about.
Was, was the surety for two, or was it for the complete project?
Surety was for the road.
Yeah, the road.
The surety is for the road, however, the agreement that covers the surety, that says when you can access the surety, only discusses two lots out of the seven or eight, however many.
Twelve.
Which is not typical. Typically, it's for all, the whole project.
It's the whole project, and you release it as you go, and then you can get the reduction on the surety.
So, you're saying if they complete those two, those two lots, then they, we could release, they could ask for the surety? Is that what you're saying?
I don't, I'm not sure that's a question for Jay.
That's not our intent, so, I mean, if that's what it erroneously says, that's certainly not the intent of any of the discussions. It was for the road.
I'm sorry you brought it up, but last week, remember?
The surety has to be for the whole project, so, it's supposed to be sidewalks, put in and everything like that.
No, it's the trigger for when you pull the surety.
Yeah.
Is if the lots, if the work is not complete on the rest of the lots.
The lot, the surety should be kept by, based upon the whole.
It is. The, the number is correct, but it's just for two lots.
So, that's gonna be revised.
Should we ask Jay on that one, or?
I think the number is correct, but let's just say they finished both, both lots, they could ask for it back.
Yeah.
Or they could.
Then there's no surety for the rest of the project.
Or we could pull it, but we wouldn't do that.
They wouldn't do that as far as the matter. It sounds like it's an administrative issue.
Issue, yeah, that's all.
Would you agree?
Jennifer?
Absolutely. Like I said, that was never the intent, it was always for the.
Yeah, I think it's just written wrong.
So, are we gonna request that to be revised at a later date? Jennifer?
We can, yeah, I'm just looking at it right now. We can sort of do that, it's only.
Yeah, it just has to have all lots right now.
Oddly placed, I'm not even sure if it was at Jay's, it might've just got lost in communication, but yeah, the, the entire, the, the plan is recorded, so it references back to the plan.
Okay. What's another amendment?
What is another amendment here? Yeah, I can work with you on that, I can get that out tomorrow. I mean, it's literally deleting three words.
Yeah.
And then the board will need to sign number one.
I know, we were so young and.
Okay, so, is it fair to say that the milestone letters has covered everything that they need to cover? Or no?
I'm deferring to the board.
Okay. The only thing I see is that, that Form H needs to be recorded, needs to be released due and recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits for the project. It's already been signed, and then the applicant shall record the same at the Worcester District Registry and submit copies of the same to the planning board.
You guys tell me how you want it.
You wanna keep talking?
Well, not that, but I, I know, I agree with all the milestones and all that, but I totally agree with Ernie with the ABCs too.
Yeah.
So, I don't know how we tie it together.
You could rescind your previous motion and then add, add the ABC removal as a condition.
What's the flip?
You mean to approve the release of the covenants, but based on satisfaction.
Yeah.
I've already signed the piece of paper.
That's what I did.
We've already signed the, this, we've already signed the piece of paper, the covenant release of the two lots.
So.
Pending.
Why can't they happen simultaneously?
They probably can't.
That's what we're trying to.
Yeah, I don't see why not. I mean, you're gonna need some time to record it at the registry, you're gonna have to get it tomorrow, record it at the registry. If you guys set up a time between now and then, I think that's a good, good effort.
Make a motion that they have to have the test pitting done prior to returning the recorded instrument.
That's fine.
But, but don't call it just test pitting, also.
ABC removal.
Observation and satisfaction of the town engineer.
Right, that's, that's the language you're gonna have to use.
But I want to be crystal clear what we need them to do.
I, I, we need them to meet with Bill.
At the sites.
And the testing that Bill requires, and to his satisfaction, all the ABCs have been removed. Now, you can set that up and do that.
Is that clear to the applicant?
We can make that pending signing the release.
We've already signed it.
Oh, yeah, right. Approved, yeah, right.
Pending the, to release the release, basically.
So, that, that work has to be completed prior to returning the recorded instrument.
That's, that's the wording I wanted.
But you need to record that other one too, don't you?
Form G?
Yeah.
No, the other one, the covenant. Yeah. You need to record that, so.
The town has held both of them, so we haven't.
Well, she's talking about the one that has the incorrect lot numbers.
Two and three, so you need to take that back anyway.
And that, that can all happen, that can all happen tonight by us acting on it, right?
The town still has that.
That, that can all happen, they'll be able to move forward pending your satisfaction that it's okay with the ABCs. We don't have to come, they don't have to come back for another meeting, we can do it all tonight if you want.
If they agree to that.
Well, I would say, Ernie, if the board votes, that Ernie can sign on their behalf for anything that needs to be signed.
I concur with that.
Yeah, me too. But, but if you say, you know, they've stockpiled, you find some ABC, they stockpile it, and they remove it, and they have a truck ready. I know. You have a truck, you have the machine there, and get it off the site, and you're done, and they're done.
Right, now we move on.
It comes up clean.
So, the only thought I have, that covenant, the G form should be recorded before we give you that covenant, the release, or no? So that they can go to the registry one time?
I can ask Jay on that.
So, there's that.
Either way, my office is five minutes down the road, and I can record very quickly, so that's either way.
Are you recording? Okay, all right. So, then that's.
We're trying to work with you so we can get everything going, the ball rolling, and not have to come back to another meeting.
So, you'll get the agreement, you'll record that, you guys will do the test pits, you'll come back, you'll get your release, you'll record that, give them a copy, and you can get your permits.
Yes, except you, the Form G needs to be amended.
Yeah, well, they just.
Yeah, so it needs to be signed again.
Yes, Ernie will sign.
Oh, just you.
Can you guys just make a vote?
Why is it getting amended?
Because it only says two lots.
Oh, that other one, that other one.
What do you need, a motion? You want a motion for Ernie to sign on behalf?
Yes, I need a motion.
I think a motion that Ernie can sign. What form?
I thought we already.
Form G?
I thought.
That Ernie can sign Form G on behalf of the planning board and the Town of Douglas.
Motion been made by Mike, seconded by Tracy, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries.
So, that comes out.
So, we all know where we are?
Yes.
You'd think so.
I know.
You do it, you do it this week now?
I thought a long time ago, we gave permission for Ernie to sign anything.
Set up a time with Bill.
Board, do you remember? It was like five years ago?
Yeah.
We already designated you.
Five minutes is becoming a difficulty for me right now. What happened five years ago?
We gave you the right to do that, same way.
The board made a motion, which I don't know if we have to renew that.
This, I don't.
The board made a motion for you to have the power to sign for the board.
That was for Bill and stuff like that, though, I don't know.
Bills.
Oh, just for Bill?
Yes.
I don't remember this, because we didn't do it for Calcom.
For which one?
Bernie, can we deal with Stonegate Estates?
Yeah.
Yep.
Stonegate Estates.
Where is that?
Will we skip?
No, I don't know why not, but it's not, I asked for it to be on that.
Road bond funds, Stonegate subdivision, request for the town to service the, the season.
That's off Franklin, it's cobblestone and those.
Okay. That's why you guys are here?
Actually, I'm here representing the developer.
Okay.
So, in your package, we got a letter.
Does anybody hold?
I thought she was.
I didn't write the letter, no.
No, it's the president wrote the letter.
I thought she was gonna be here.
Okay.
Okay, I told her. Maybe she was, I don't know.
Okay.
So, it looks like this.
Yep.
Harry Ryan.
Still trying to get there.
There you go.
Thank you.
Single page?
One page, yeah.
I did see this.
How much money do we have?
Nope.
Is it like, and the bond? I have a, a copy of the tripartite, and I think it's about 34,000.
I said 36.
Is it considered, considered phase four, correct?
Is the road, please, accepted?
Yeah, the project's almost done.
The project's nearly done. We, we were trying to get it accepted at the last annual town meeting, yeah, okay.
I just wasn't sure if it went through or didn't go through.
It did not.
It's this close, it just has a couple things to do, which they have to do, I mean, to pull the bond would be ridiculous, in my opinion, but go ahead and present what you want to present.
Just give your name and, name and address.
I'm another Tracy. So, my dad, Kevin Rafferty, owns the property, KTK Realty Trust, and so, basically, we've had some situations in our life. My dad's been in declining health over the last couple of years, and my brother was the foreman, and he got very ill, and he was in the hospital for over four months, actually about four months. And I stepped in, in, was it February?
Yeah.
I left my job to step in to help the family. And I was working on a project in Whitensville when Gary, Attorney Gary San Genario reached out to Unibank and said, listen, we still have a tripartite agreement. And so, we kinda went back and forth, and it wasn't until September 4th that I actually got a little more detail from Mr. San Genario, saying, okay, so it looks like the road's done, the plans have been submitted, which are the big hurdles, and it's just some small punch list items that need to be fixed. And I'm like, great, super, you know, still working on my project. And then, yesterday, I got hit with a letter, you know, from your office, as well as our attorney sent it to me. So, that's the first I've heard of, you know, the letter from the woman. I do understand we need to get this moving, and we're committed to finishing it. Since yesterday, I've called every department in town, pretty much, probably multiple times, our engineer, just trying to get the deal, I'm a very little person, so I'm looking for the details, I'm looking for the punch list that I need to go by to complete this. I intended on coming here with a schedule, I told you that. I don't have it, because I don't have all the details of what needs to be done. My hope was that I could meet with you onsite to take a look at what needs to be done, so that I can schedule it. And I have landscapers, won't be an issue as far as clearing the brush out, but I just want to get a better idea of what the punch list was, you know, when we were last visiting this. I'm sure I can find it somewhere, I just, it's at my parents' house somewhere on a pile, and I just, you know? So, I mean, we are committed to getting it done. He's never walked away from any responsibility, I don't know anyone that knows him, but, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's something.
Someone who owns property out there? I think they're trying to sell a lot or something, maybe to butt some of this stuff.
It's beautiful, I mean, how, there's, no one's gonna walk with it.
So, so what I've asked them to do is, let's get a schedule. I agree, we can go out and go through the scope, and I'd probably ask John to come out also. And we did go through this with Michael about a year ago.
Yeah, we did this with Mike about a year ago. We, we walked it, Phil, myself, and the Ohio superintendent. He actually did start doing some of the work that we asked him to do as far as the detention points and stuff.
The road paved, you know, I mean.
Yeah, the paving was done, yeah, I mean, so, it just all of a sudden stopped, and I understand why, so.
And I didn't realize, honestly, because I haven't been part of the family business for a while, I, a long time ago, I worked for him, but I didn't realize exactly what was going on out here, so, otherwise, I would've stepped in sooner, I just didn't know.
Right.
All right, go ahead, Bill.
So, so basically, we'll, we'll develop the punch list, we'll present that, we'll go through the requirements of the process to get the road accepted, and then, you know, as long as they're diligent and they work towards a schedule, I don't see why we can't just hit the town meeting in May and.
Well, he's not enough for a wiper.
I mean, they get the champion something. Let's be first.
I would say they would have to, you'd have to start now, though, right? Because there's a deadline to get on.
October 1st, you gotta submit a letter in writing.
October 1st?
We could probably piggyback off last letter, maybe.
Could I predate it?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Like I said, the project's this close, it's just, you know.
So, maybe you can guide me as to, or I'm sure Attorney Jerry Shigro can help us as well, but as far as what exactly I need to be asking for to get on the docket.
Yes.
I think the biggest thing is standing in contact.
I think I sent you a copy of the letter.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And then, that'd be a big thing.
Yeah, Joey has the entire list.
Yes, I've sent.
Joey has the entire list.
He does, okay. All right, and the list of punch list items? He does, all right, good to know, all right.
Am I good with that?
Yes.
Let's go see it in that direction.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for coming in.
Can we just respond to this person back? That this is planned beyond May to be accepted, and that the developer is working to.
Finalize it.
Finalize it. If you can take care of that detention area first, that'll be good.
Of course, absolutely, yeah.
And that'll make them happy.
Of course, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
It's okay, it's all good. It was entertaining.
No, no.
I haven't been to a meeting in a long time. Thank you.
That'd be nice to get that all.
So it's a two call descent on the...
Wrap it all that up.
All right, so we're moving on. Accessory apartment extension, Timothy and Diane Robar, 91 Chestnut Street.
Mike, you can do a combo if you want.
Yeah, there you go.
Combo.
Two more.
There's one, there's two.
Yeah, we have two. We want a combo, that's fine.
Can you hand me the holders?
Everything is looking good.
Taxes, the fee, one waiver they have.
So we need to make a motion to accept the renewal for the accessory apartments for Alex Ferguson and at 298 South Street, and Timothy and Diane Robar at 91 Chestnut Street.
Second.
Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Aaron.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
That's for the extensions.
Yep.
All those in favor? All right. Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Commerce, we talked about that last time. I didn't see what the minutes say.
No signs on the...
Don't let Phil just touch on that.
Yeah, I thought we already had finished that discussion.
I wasn't here, I told you last meeting, so maybe you guys did. If you guys did, that's fine. I know what it is, so...
That would be next, the whole idea, essentially.
Mr. Connaught feels that Douglas's bylaw is more liberal than that of Sutton and Oxbridge.
Except for...
Ms. Sharkey stated that it would be easier to change uses than adopt the new zoning. It was decided to put it, oh, on for next agenda for discussion.
Talking about the multi-town.
Yeah, I think you guys have homework. You're gonna look at our zoning versus their zoning and see which ones were more liberal or restrictive.
Have you done your homework?
Not all of it, but I concur with what Bill was saying, like, the biggest thing was the hotel.
And we also don't have the lot coverage, and the other two towns do.
So we got more homework to do and come back again.
What do you mean? It was hotel and no lot coverage. We have a hundred, we could do a hundred percent lot coverage.
No lot coverage?
So we're more liberal. We, we don't have a lot coverage standard, most of them are twenty percent. I think Oxbridge and Sutton number was twenty percent.
What?
Building coverage, for the building.
That's how big the footprint is of the building. Oh, no.
Yeah, we don't do it that way, so...
No, we don't. We're more liberal, again.
So...
I think that if there is a proposed development at that location, we are gonna be feeling the impact of the traffic, especially at the Dunkin', where I go to get my coffee.
Wait a little longer.
We should be looking for some monetary impact fee, because it's emptying into us.
Do you want us to discuss it a bit more tonight? Do you want to still research and bring it up at the next meeting?
I'm ready for Bud.
Yeah, okay, let's continue until the next meeting on discussion.
We have a ZBA?
Yeah, we have a ZBA that has to get done. Who wants it?
We gotta sign something?
Yeah.
Yep. I'll start this, I'll start that around now. ZBA? All right, that finishes up everything on our agenda. Anything outside of the agenda, Bill?
I have a last meeting underneath that meeting. I don't want that.
I have a memo that I had in your packet regarding Gilboa Pond, no parking signs. I want your okay on it. If there's needs to be edited, let me know.
As long as Town Council's saying that we have the rights to request that, right? I think the letter's good.
He said, I believe, his email...
He said it both ways.
Yeah, his email...
That's the problem that I'm having with that.
Okay, so I'm providing the email along with the...
The correct email, not both emails.
The last email that he gave me.
Form G Renewable Energies, so we can't do it, but we can request.
So I'm gonna do it.
It's North West...
Yeah, they're the road company, aren't they?
Is it, the whole planning board has to sign this, right?
They do, but my recollection is there was an issue with it, but you can sign it, and then I'll check it.
I mean, it's not our regular, where you have the name and you check, I don't...
No, this is, this is a surety form.
Oh, okay.
Agenda last meeting, and we said...
So what's, what's the witness and all that stuff? It says name, planning board member, date, witness.
I'll witness it, go ahead.
I'll just find my name and go down the line. And you have to date it every time, or do you...
Do whatever you feel comfortable with, Ernie. We'll take care of it.
I mean, this is... It's got a spot for a note of republic, I mean...
Yeah, well, Maria will take care of that. You just sign, each one of you sign and date it, and then...
Got it. I'm gonna start passing these around, you guys can start signing them.
All right, and while you're doing that, I'll throw out what we've got going on here. We're down on Whiten's reservoir. We're eighty feet off the lake. There's an existing garage there right now that's non-conforming. It's only eight feet off the property line. They want to build a new garage, they want to move it eight and a half feet from the property line. And so they're searching for a special permit.
No objection.
Two eight and a half?
Existing non-conformity doesn't increase non-conformity.
What is it now?
So you're back to your ten foot, you think ten foot's bad.
They wanted to move it to eight and a half feet some water.
They want to tear it down, build a new one.
Yeah, these are garages.
No, it's gonna be bigger, but it's gonna be further away, a half foot further away.
It's not making it anymore.
It's not gonna be closer, it's gonna be further away. It's down there on the bottom. Everybody good?
Yeah.
There's already house and everything already all there, so...
What we need to do for the residential compound?
You guys were, basically, didn't you say...
Yeah, no, I'm just gonna figure out the right thing.
Well, I distributed the form. You guys had a brief conversation that some of you said you wanted to pass, some said you didn't. Mike wanted it.
So you have a recommendation for us to come back with?
I think I need specific directions.
And that should take care of that one.
You don't, there's only one spot.
Oh, is that yours?
Same thing with this one.
I know, but women, they do it.
I did.
How are you surviving?
All around me.
So it doesn't get forgotten? I know.
That's really why my face is red.
I wore a red T-shirt, too.
Anything else we have to discuss?
Nope.
We have that last...
So we're good to submit that memo on Gilboa Pond?
Please.
Yes, on the sign removing?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and the signs for the 170 West Street solar project, did you see them?
The no parking signs? Yeah. I'm working with Julie on that.
I mean, if somebody's gonna try to park there, they can see that if there's no parking. It's like, oh my God. That's hilarious. At the entrance of the, the new solar farm on West Street.
170.